No.
It is five o'clock. A call to order. The regularly scheduled board meeting, Kidittas County Public Hospital District Number One, Board of Commissioners, it is Thursday, October twenty seven, twenty twenty-two. Can you hear my full call, Sergeant Sauce?
Yes, Erica Lippinow.
I am here.
John Ward.
Here.
Matt Altman.
Here.
Terry Clark.
Here.
Bob Davis.
Here.
Julie Peterson.
Here.
Scott Alander.
Here.
Stacy LaF.
Here.
Vicki McChale.
Here.
Kitty Atlee.
Here.
Mandy Olson.
Here.
Dr. Martin.
Here.
Dr. O'Brien.
Here.
We've got Dr. Penoyer.
Here.
And let's see who's on, Ron Erlacher.
Here.
Thank you.
Michelle Whirl.
Oh, there's more.
Here.
Jason Edlin.
Hannah Scott.
Here.
And Tricia Sedet. She's got audio. It's like she doesn't have audio, but she's on.
Jason Edlin.
Yeah, he's not on yet.
If I could back up and apologize to the group, I've been a little hasty in calling the meeting to order because we need a public order to be a budget hearing meeting. So let's do that first. Starting with review of the twenty twenty-three budget, but the whole call still stands. Thank you.
The resolution and the budget document that is impacted on pages three, four, five is related to a budget for the levy that allows us to, the district, to receive some tax money. And so the overall budget is for net operating revenue one hundred and twenty-three million, seven hundred thousand. Re-expensive one hundred and eighteen million, seven hundred, a net budget of five hundred million.
Say that number again. They said five hundred million. Sorry. We're gonna start spending.
And then the levy, then with the non-operating two thousand three hundred thousand, we would have a total net income, including the additional levy of five million, three oh nine, eight thirty-two. And the amount of the levy increase for Bob Davis is ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two cents.
Which keeps us still under ten thousand per year.
Fortunately.
Yeah, remarkable.
Maybe next year.
Dislocation being what it is.
Do you need a vote to approve that?
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
But by Bob, seconded by John, all in favor of approving the adoption of the twenty twenty-three budgets? And are we doing the budget and levy at the same time or separately? Separately, okay. Budget, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, please say nay. Passes. All right. And how about the motion? Property tax voting?
Yeah, yeah. Second.
Moved by Matt and seconded by Terry. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That also passes.
What's that?
Unless you have something else?
Not at this time.
All right.
We'll adjourn the budget hearing. Now, back to your regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. And to start, I would like to take a moment to recognize Julie Peterson being awarded the Joe Hopkins Award for Outstanding Leadership in Home Care. It's a very prestigious award, and we are so thrilled that she's won. We think it is well deserved. And I believe that Michelle has a question for us.
Um, I, let me try and pull that one up. Give me two seconds.
Yay for Julie the Hopkins.
Yeah.
If you could all join me, a round of applause for Julie. Thank you, Terry, for nominating.
Well, SpongeBob SquareTie and I are very excited about you. Yay.
Michelle, we could certainly watch that a little later if it's kind of slow to load. I could just make a long.
Yeah, if we could, I apologize. I'm trying to find where the team had said that. So I'll shoot a message in chat as soon as I've got that ready.
Sounds good. Sounds good. And we can wait to watch it then. So again, congratulations.
Thank you, Christine.
All right, let's move on to the approval of the agenda. And before I get a motion for that, I would like to amend the agenda to add bullet point E under new business to discuss coffee with the Commissioner few themes that I think would be a good discussion to have. And that's regarding mostly surrounding emergency and what that looks like today.
Let me try to ask her again.
If we could add that there, that would be great. And I get a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
I'll move.
Sorry, Bob.
Does anybody want a second? I'll second. Okay, so moved by Matt, seconded by Bob. I don't have any more left right here. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay.
Yeah.
That passes.
Erica, Michelle has that.
Is she ready? Perfect. All right, great timing.
I don't have the.
What are you saying?
That's great.
I'm saying the most eloquent things you've ever heard.
Can you turn the sound up a little bit?
Yeah, it's, that's right. It's nice though.
This video just does not want to be played for people.
It doesn't. All right. Michelle, can you hear us that we have no volume on the video?
Oh, okay. No, I can't. Well, I just heard that, and I think that's gotta come from here. And let me, I'll send Mandy the link and see if she can pull it up on that end.
Should have all followed Shannon's.
She can't because we're using the Zoom box, and then she'd have to pull her email up on the shared content screen.
All right, you guys go ahead. I'm gonna shoot this over to Mandy.
I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out.
I just emailed it to you, Michelle. If you can put it in the link to the Dropbox in the shared folder under the board documents, we can pull it up from there if we're able to do that.
I can do that. I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
In the meantime, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Before you do that, one question on the respectfully submitted part. If I was to go ahead five years in the future and look back at this, I'd be confused with the way this is written. Is this standard or it sounds like we're missing Fisher or Terry Clark or something? I don't know.
Okay.
Start page, page. Yeah. Is that, is this the standard way we write out the names and the titles? I thought it was more readable in previous version. I don't know if anybody else has seen my.
I do think it.
Because we have her title, but we don't have Terry's title. So I would read it in the future as Terry Clark is the medical staff coordinator. But again, that's just a waste of things.
I think that that was probably a one-time name that Shannon filled in for me.
If you look at page twelve, I think you're right, because that's when the joint meeting, I think, was over.
Okay, yeah, that's a lot clearer to kind of see what.
Updated for plus theory.
Yeah.
So it'll be great. All right.
Now I move to approve the consent agenda.
Moved by John.
Second.
Seconded by Terry.
Seconded by Terry. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. Passes. All right, next. Okay, public comment and announcements. Are any public comments and announcements? If you have a public comment, please state your name, address, and please keep your comment to three minutes or less, understanding that the board does not respond to public comment in open session. I believe we're going to have students making an announcement in production. Are they following us?
Michelle, are your students gonna be joining us from Central?
Yeah, they were supposed to be here at five, so I don't see them, but I will fill you in. I mentioned it in my board report. We have a team of four students with the Central Communication Agency, the CCA, who this quarter are working with my team to get experience within their class. They're getting credits on this. And they're focusing on the appreciation banquet on December third. And they'll also be doing basically a SWOT analysis and marketing development plan on, in what they feel would help KVH reach central students, information that they need to know, how we can better reach them with our students. So they have, Jacqueline is the lead in that, and she coordinates the three other team members. And we touch base at least weekly, if not a couple times a week. Their first task is to develop invitations, work on catering programs. So they really want to get into event planning to understand some of the background on that, and then use some of their marketing skills with the reach out to central students. So we'll be working with them through December, and if we see some names pop up, that's why they're here. And if we give them a couple seconds, I apologize that they are not on. They might be having some type of difficulty. I haven't heard from her. But despite them not being here, they are very attentive and wonderful students. So I'm really excited about being able to work with them.
Well, what a fantastic resource for you and great opportunity for them. So it sounds like it's a real win-win situation.
Absolutely. It's a great, great experience for all of us.
Very nice.
And Mandy, the link is in the Word document there for you.
Okay. Sure. Do you wanna watch that now or?
If it's ready to go.
Yeah, let's try it.
In the meantime, were there any other public comments or announcements?
And I don't want to discuss it. If somebody in the audience is gonna think, you don't have to give their personal address. They should give me an opportunity to see your.
Okay.
Not their personal address.
I see a recall.
It's address.
Is it, is it still address? I knew that there was discussion about that previously. And I thought that we thought maybe to change, but then we found out it was still address.
That's what that's required under.
So Mandy, you're saying the person does have to give their personal address?
I'm pretty positive.
Is that for, required by what, the open public meetings?
I think not to have.
It doesn't have to be within the district if they are supposed to give an address.
So by address, it has to be a street address. It can't just be Ellensburg?
Or Peel Box.
I believe it's supposed to be their physical location. I can look tomorrow at MRS and get back to you.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. My MRS your last state, you're not even gonna look. All this stuff.
Do you want to play it?
Yes, please.
Let's see if it works.
As President of Kidittas County Public Hospital District Number One Board of Commissioners, I would like to extend a tremendous congratulations to our CEO, Julie Peterson. We couldn't be more proud of you.
Congratulations, Julie.
Yay.
Julie.
Julie.
We see your dedication.
Hey, Julie, congratulations on the award. So well deserved. And I'm so happy that people get to recognize you for the wonderful leader that you are. Thanks for everything you do.
Congratulations, Julie.
Yay, good job.
You're awesome.
Congratulations, Julie.
Be so happy, including me and SpongeBob SquareTie.
Congratulations on the Joe Hopkins Award. You're a great administrator. You're a great person. You've done amazing things in healthcare. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Julie.
Congratulations, Julie. We're so glad that we have you as our leader.
Just wanted to say congratulations. It's very, you're a very good leader, and it's not a huge surprise that you would win that reward. So just wanted to say congrats and keep doing a great job for us. We really appreciate it.
You inspire us to be our best.
Congratulations, Julie. I'm so proud of you.
Congratulations, Julie.
I am so proud of you and not surprised at all that you have won this award. We are all so lucky to have you as our leader. You're just incredible. So just wanted to say thank you for all you do and congratulations.
Congratulations, Julie.
Congratulations, Julie. You deserve it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Julie, on winning this award. I have great respect for you, the integrity for which you lead this organization, and this is well deserved. So, great job. Thank you.
Congratulations.
We are proud to call you our leader.
Hey, Julie, congratulations on the award.
Congratulations, Julie. We're so proud of you.
Julie, I just wanna let you know that I'm so proud of you. You are amazing and totally, totally deserve this award. You care about us so much, and I, I just really can't even say what a wonderful person you are, and I appreciate all that you do for us.
Congratulations, Mom.
We're so proud of you. Surprise.
Congratulations on your award, Julie. I can't think of anyone more deserving than you. Thanks for all you do for KVH, the patients, the employees, and the community.
Congratulations, Julie.
Congratulations.
Oh, very nice.
I'm a little sad that they cut my video down a little bit.
Again.
No, it's real.
It was direct from Sacramento.
Yeah.
So.
My video turned out, Julie, Julie, you're so coolly, you're number one.
We're gonna.
It is so wonderful that you are the one that won. And everybody's very happy, including SpongeBob and me.
Is that?
Sorry. No, that's right. I just wanted to tell you how coolly Julie is.
Is Amanda out there for a presentation?
I am.
You are up.
Great. Hi, everybody. And I think Mandy's gonna navigate. So I do have a few slides, but pretty much just a short update. It's been almost three years since I've joined KVH. I can't believe it. But that means that we're on year three of our staff development plan. And so I wanted to give you guys an update on some of our accomplishments on that today and just a little of kind of what's ahead and kind of what we're planning. So first of all, I'll just say that I, when I joined KVH, I chose KVH and, you know, gladly accepted the position because of the emphasis on staff development that was going to be in my role. That really is, you know, in line with my experience, education, but also my passion and HR and really kind of where I've spent most of my time as an HR leader. And I was excited that there was some centralized dedicated resources for staff development. I've worked under different models before, and, you know, it's something, staff development is almost as simple as improving organizational communication, right? It's just such an easy task. It's something that's an ongoing journey. There's really no end goal in sight, but there is a lot of progress and a lot of things along the way that you have to really adapt to your workforce. And so I'm excited to kind of share about that a little bit today. We, of course, have work ahead as we always will. But with, and happy to give just a brief summary. So this first slide is really just, again, the purpose of why this is so important. We know that staff development is a key part of engagement. That's what all the research says. But that's what our employees say through our employee engagement survey, focus groups, other things that, other opportunities we've had to engage with our staff. It matches what the research says out there. You know, Gallup, who I quoted here, has some statistics about how that relates to productivity, safety, retention. We can make connections to all of those parts of our strategic plan, which is why we spent so much time on that at our, at our board retreat, our mid-year check-in. And because it's such an integral part of being successful with our strategy and especially with our workforce. And so it's something that we continue to pursue. So we'll move to the next slide, and then we're gonna jump into a little bit about who we are. So my tagline, and for those who have worked with me enough, have probably heard me say this. Staff development is not a one person's job or role or department at KVH. It's really a philosophy. It's a cultural commitment that we are making. That's why my first project and task, when I came on board, Julie tasked me with create a three-year staff development plan. That's, and that's why we're here, because it is such a focus for us, and many departments are working on that and have value staff development. But we are lucky enough to have some dedicated resources that are subject matter experts in learning and development that are working towards those initiatives that we've been partnering with over the last three years. So again, being a philosophy and a partnership is part of partnerships and collaboration strategy, but also collaboration value. We have our organizational side of staff development. So that's my area, our HR division. We have Ashley Minyard, who's our staff development specialist. She has an incredible background with the Brain Injury Alliance of Washington, doing presentations all over the state, building curriculum for physicians. She has a master's degree in human development, and she's just done some incredible things for us. Some of you may have seen her when we just did our team steps. She coordinated our entire master training for team steps training, which was essentially planning a conference. So she did great with that. Crystal is our HR Division Assistant. Point five of her FTE is assigned to staff development. She does all the administrative sides of scheduling all of our classes, scheduling new employee orientation, being our liaison with Cascade, life support instructors, and evade, and all of our external experts that we have, that we coordinate with that aren't within our KVH walls that are also part of our team. So she does all the administrative kind of scheduling, coordinating, billing, all of that. Jen, with her role as an HR business partner, she works really closely with Ashley as part of her role with career development. So she's done things like revamp our performance evaluation tool, start a career coaching template, which we're kind of pursuing and dabbling with right now, is the career coaching for our staff. So things like that that really are staff development, but more focused on job and career development. And then Vicki's team, we partner with very often. She added Deborah Scheib this year and who is an RN clinical educator, as well as Babi, who's been an RN clinical educator and has expertise in OB. So she spends some time in OB as well. The outpatient clinics, this was a new one, part of our last three-year plan, is we realized that clinics were growing, the needs were great. We have high needs with MAs and PSRs. And so we, we hired two staff developer, PSR development coordinator and MA development coordinator. So they're specialized staff development coordinators in those areas, and that has been incredible. We are continuing to partner in HR with them as well in terms of onboarding, department orientation. Shelley, for the MA development coordinator, has been really, really into work environments and team building, and she's partnered with us in HR on some activities to improve communication, which has been excellent. And again, this is not an exhaustive list. These are just the folks that we have dedicated specifically to staff development. IT has their own trainers, departments have their own educators as well in some areas that focus on special projects and education. And so that's, there's other folks out there that I just want to acknowledge that are key, key partners to us. So we'll move on to the staff development plan slide. So this is wordy, I know, but it's because it came from my actual plan that's in an Excel document. And I'm not gonna go through word for word with this, but what I do wanna highlight is the overall strategy that we developed. And it all came back to kind of a three-level strategy for staff development. The first strategy is hands-on job skills for staff. If they don't know how to do their job, they don't feel competent in their job, they're not gonna be able to further develop themselves. So that's really more about competency, job skills. Things like customer service training do relate to that because it's such a core skill for many positions. But that's really where we focused on the core job skills for our staff. So being able to feel confident and competent really in my job. The level two is really about our values. It's really about team building. That's where I mentioned Shelley. He's done some really great work with that. We've also given some tools and created some tools around things like conflict, respect, just things that our customer service training does touch on this as well in terms of internal customer service with each other, which has been great, and we've gotten some good feedback on that. But that's the type of things that with the team level strategy, we're trying to accomplish. The third is career development. That's really expanding people's potential, you know, moving beyond their specific job duties, but developing themselves personally. What are their goals? What do they want to achieve? So we've revamped our performance evaluation tool, added some career options, some career coaching options on there. And we continue to look at things like using our learning management system, Biz Library, beyond compliance training, because that's what people associate it with, but it's actually a really great resource for some really credible trainings and things that are in there. So we continue to focus on career development as well, coaching, succession planning. How do we invest in people's individual education plans? So we've done some of that this year as well. So the next slide is about, really, what does that actually look in terms of work rather than high-level strategy? And again, a lot of words. I'm not gonna go through this line by line, but we broke it down year by year on what do we actually want to accomplish? Some specific tactics, projects, things like that. Some things like, you know, expand evade training, implement customer service training are project-based. Other things are gonna be ongoing things forever that we're probably never gonna accomplish a hundred percent, but we do wanna make progress, and we want to accomplish specific initiatives within those areas. So things, you know, again, like career development, improving communication around staff development, those are gonna be things we're always gonna be working on. Twenty twenty, again, we all know what happened in twenty twenty, but we still accomplished a lot. The real focus of twenty twenty around staff development was how do we keep our core programs virtual or in a different way? So we, we went new employee orientation. We went virtual on that. We had to re-strategize. Unfortunately, we did have to stop team steps. We were hoping to have a virtual option or something else with that, but it really just wasn't designed for that. So that's why we're relaunching that. We started the year with researching customer service training options. We actually, I was able to attend a free conference about, from, that was hosted by Disney, about healthcare and from the Disney Institute, and that was really fascinating. Again, our rep there had to, they, Disney shut down some of their resources during COVID there as well. And then we ended up selecting our partner, Idea Learning Group, to help us build our own customer service training that year that we worked on, that was in line with our values at KVH, and actually really brought in some of those same credible concepts from other trainings. Those are some highlights from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. That's when the clinical development coordinators came in. We have also, we expanded our evade training. We started, we, you know, workplace violence training was so important to us, and we kept hearing from staff how important it was to have those de-escalation tools, that we started a process of scheduling new hires directly into that process. So we were able to expand that. We continued work around customer service training. We weren't quite able to implement that yet. We continued to kind of fine-tune that and get the facilitator group trained. But we, again, with COVID being, really wanting to be able to do group sessions, we weren't able to implement that and some other things that we really wanted to do. We continued to look at how do we maximize Biz Library, since in COVID we had to really be virtual. How do we, how do we use that? We, we kind of had some, some things that we needed to fix with sign-on access, that kind of thing. So we were looking at kind of our internal systems for that. This year, we've been able to accomplish several things. We were excited to receive a grant for bilingual education, so we continued to work on kind of some DEI work and kind of, we've partnered with WISHA. Michelle's been really key in this, kind of seeing what our other rural hospitals doing around DEI work. So we're kind of in stages around that. We implemented career coaching. We developed some great new tools for leadership development, and leadership development plans are in place. And so we've been able to also update our new employee orientation based on our new strategic plan and strategy. So those are some highlights of the types of things that we broke it down year by year. Again, if you have questions on anything specifically, we can talk more about that. I also wanna say that we, over the last three years, have been, that you'll see some language about physician development. Dr. Martin and I have been partnering really closely on the physician side of leadership development and staff development as well. So the next slide is some of our accomplishments, I believe. Let me see here. Yes. So I talked about some of these already, so I won't repeat myself. But again, four new roles in staff development. This is kind of over the whole three years, which is great. We are really focusing on our organizational approach to staff development. One thing I haven't talked about yet is we implemented certification pay program, so we can incentivize staff to continue their education. So that's another program that we implemented. And we got a DNV accredited, which is great, because DNV, there's a lot of competency and training requirements around that, around safety, regulatory needs, and that's, that's gonna be a big opportunity for us in the future as well to stay on top of that. And of course, our team steps training, which was wonderful, master training. We got thirty new people through team steps training for our safety culture. We also did a lot of intentional work around succession planning and leadership coaching. We had a great group of about eight new leaders, you know, join us, I think, this year, and we wanna help. This year, and we want to help foster that, and you'll see when you go to the what's ahead slide, um, a little bit more about that. So we'll move to that. So what's ahead? You know, leadership development. Again, we were very excited for, you know, as we talk about succession planning and get more advanced in that. Um, we were able to promote some really great new leaders. And so Julie has started a process where she meets with every new leader now to specifically talk about our core values around leadership at K V H. And um, we want to look at cohorting that group a little bit more, like as a support for leadership. Um, I also want to bring up, which I haven't talked really about yet, but there's a lot of connection with recognition and wellness committee with staff development. Um, in our last wellness committee, you know, somebody said, being able to learn and meet your own goals, that is part of wellness. And so we've had a lot of staff development conversations around wellness as well. We've had some goals around onboarding. We want that to be a really great experience. Um, there's. You know, uh, there's a lot of research out there that a large portion of, you know, turnover happens within that first year. We want to be able to engage um, with the managers, with the other educators and development coordinators on the onboarding experience for our. Staff, continued career coaching. Um, we want to get even more advanced level with our evade training, which our evade trainer actually just has. Hugely complimented K V H. He feels that he just really feels he's a huge, great partner. He's an expert. People love him. I think it's, it, I've never been thanked so many times for offering a training when staff complete that training because. Um, he's just such an engaging expert. Um, but we want to advance to that, things like um, having our E D team and our security team be able to do training together. Um, on how we can partner for a more uh, escalated workplace violence events or um, behaviors, that type of thing. We're going to be relaunching our team steps curriculum, so we're really excited to um, design that. Um, continuing with D A D E I training, and um, I think Julie has said she wants to see eighty percent of our staff with certification pay. So. We're really trying to promote that. A lot of people still just aren't aware that they can do that. Since it's budgeting, people are kind of um, budgeting for some of those continuing education resources as well. And um, we've been doing some physician breakfast, some um, physician leadership education. So. Um, Dr. Martin and I have a copy around physicians as well. So. That's just a real high level. It was a lot of words, but um, I'm trying to be as comprehensive, but also concise as possible. So I'll take any questions. And Julie, feel free to jump in if you feel like there's something I did not highlight that I should have.
I'm exhausted, Amanda.
It's a lot of work. Yeah, it's a lot of work, and um, I just am really thankful for our partners and our teams that um, have been so dedicated to this and kept it going even through COVID. So, thank you.
I would just say that I think the staff here for the the culture has really um, sort of reinforced staff wanting to do more development and education. So I think there's been a frustration in having to go virtual and really not being able to have those in person events that they were used to. So they're chomping at the bit. We're hearing about it at WSMA. They, you know, they really want to see the program be really robust, but today and yesterday. They had safe patient here, so we had people back in person. So we're starting to see those events. So. Um, again, it's something we've always in the K V H is just always really valuing that. So it's frustrating.
Even the budgets, going through the budgets and meeting with all the directors and people, there's a definite sense that people are really missing those in person. Um, connections that they've made over the years and, you know, most haven't done anything outside since two thousand nineteen and. And made those connections outside of virtual, so.
I I would agree with Julie. Had a conversation with staff. I hear that development, education, that's all very. Very much valued. And so I'm happy to hear about the investment. There's lots going on, lots.
Yeah, I think um, really one of our goals is we want to be able to communicate that more. We know people can't always check their their email every day. We try to use announcements. We revamped our website, but we're going to continue to work on that. Is there's still just a lot of things people don't know. So, thank you for that. We'll we'll uh, we'll work on making sure it's out there.
I'd say thank you, Amanda. Does anybody have questions for me or comments? No. Thank you for the presentation. All right, moving along to new business. A full plate here. Starting off with twenty twenty three Board of Officers. This is October. It is our last. Regularly scheduled board meeting of the year because November and December happen at um. Not usually it's not the fourth Thursday of the month, so those are not regularly scheduled and our bylaws, bylaws say that the election happens. In the last regularly scheduled board meeting of the year, which is today. So I'm. Historically, officers have served two years. Sorry, my best to fucking up. Two years of in each position and then. Um, we still hold on it, but but that has been the tradition that gives an officer to settle in the role and. And advance yeah, in the proficiency in that role. And generally, we would keep with that. However, um, I have some. Commitments in my personal life that mean that I need to step down um, starting next year from this position. And I will be a regular commissioner after that. Um, not a fancy commissioner like I am right now. So um, I would like to propose a slate of commissioners that is mostly in keeping with that two year term, but. In the context of me not being president next year. And that would include the advancement of Matt from current vice president to president. Terry from secretary to vice president, and then introduce John in the role of secretary. And then we um, we'll go from there. So this, if there's interest in that slate, can I have a motion for that slate? Are you talking?
Gee, yes, I'll I'll make a motion for that slate. Um, I guess the only change is John, if he's okay. He's willing to be in that position.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So moved by Bob. Seconded.
I seconded.
Seconded by Terry. Any discussion before we vote? All right, all in favor of the proposed slate? Please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Please say nay. Congratulations, twenty twenty three officers. That passes. All right. So next up is board committees and I turn to page. Page is eighteen and nineteen. No, that's. Seventeen, page seventeen is the current committee assignment. If if we like how the committees are currently. I'm open to hearing if we should change them, but I my thought is that if we like how we're serving currently, then perhaps we should maintain what we have. Any discussion on that?
Does anybody wants to change committees? I'd like the committees I'm on.
I like the committees I'm on too.
I'd I'd like to stay on finance. Uh, I would be open to. Uh, switching compliance for an opportunity to serve on the medical executive committee.
And just actually, thank you for bringing that up because I. Currently on that as president, and then Matt, you would then be there next year. I don't necessarily have to be on that. So. You and John for med executives.
Yeah, do you want to uh, switch with John? John, does that sound?
Yeah, that'd be good if you were to.
Depending on, when does compliance mean?
Three thirty on the second Thursday.
Compliance is almost always virtual, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I I don't, I don't feel like I would be doing the services if I accepted.
Do we have to have two people on that? I think it previously happened to spend one, I think. So Terry could.
You know, I could stay on the compliance committee. The medical executive committee would be fun to be on too. So I'm a little jealous of you, John. It's a blast. I would love to be on that.
Some of the best jokes are old in the exact.
And some of the worst.
What? No, it's my name.
I do.
No. All right, so compliance is is Terry only.
Hey, Bob, you don't have any interest. Do you have any interest in in being a sort of full member of the compliance committee, or do you want to stay an alternate? Do you have a preference?
Yeah, I'm okay with staying alternate.
Okay.
Yeah. So I like be uh, with John, I like being on the finance.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, right.
All right.
And 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 just for clarity, I've been the chair of that this year of finance. It's listed as Bob is chair. It's minor, but just.
Chair, not Bob. Okay. Uh, and then will you be the chair in twenty twenty three or? Yes, I know that that happened during committee.
Uh, for for finance? I think I'll probably stay another year.
I think we have two year term. We have signed it, I think, basically.
All right, then is there, is there any um, objection or John? Is it all right for John to stay chair?
Oh, go ahead.
Mark that down here.
Bob, you are over there?
Yeah, totally.
Uh, the only other thing that might need to change is the C E O evaluation.
Right, right. Yes, that would absolutely change. Um.
I would be glad to be on that.
All right.
Let somebody else do, because me and SpongeBob would love to evaluate me.
Well, there there isn't room for three people. Okay, all right. So if it's you and me, it's just you and me. SpongeBob is going to have to stay out. Okay, SpongeBob will stay out. Fine. I'll take you, Terry, but SpongeBob has to stay. Okay.
Uh, values.
Square tie, yeah.
Values alignment, will that stay Bob and Amanda?
I'm good with that. Um, you.
I like the continuity.
We don't have an alternate. Uh, I think John would be a good alternate.
Yeah, I'm fine with that also.
All right, and then joint districts. But Terry and me, I certainly would like to stay on that if there's no objection.
Yes, I would say on the joint. Down with that joint. Possible duty one and two.
Okay. Any other changes that are obligatory?
As you decide, Bob is remaining as the liaison between.
Foundation. If, were you sticking with that, Bob, the liaison?
Yes, yeah, I I enjoy that.
All right. Keep that will. Contact with my water. Um, and then John, you're still alternate.
That's fine.
Okay. Um, any other changes that need to be made? Would we like this? All right.
Yeah, I want I want to remain on Q I council, like a favorite to. It's a part of his job. I mean, I love that committee. Anyway, you know, I like to be good.
All right. All right, so we got two stars that looks like we need to move. Make a motion.
I move to approve the twenty twenty three committee meeting assignment.
Second.
Moved by John is seconded by Matt. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, please say nay. All right, that passes.
You're stuck with me for another year, maybe.
Okay, okay. And then the board.
We still do. Yeah.
Twenty twenty three calendar. Anything missing, anything surplus?
So if um, anybody else besides me can just pull up a calendar. And look at March twenty first. So what we're saying according to this is this is our regular board meeting would be March twenty first. Is that how I'm reading this blue and white chart? Is March twenty first on my phone is a Tuesday.
Really is.
So I'm assuming, and it's and it's the third, it's the third Tuesday, five and the fourth Tuesday. So what should the correct?
It must be a side track there.
The twenty third?
I have it.
It's the twenty third.
Preloaded as the twenty third on my, as I step up.
So that led me to check some others. And if you look at May.
On the wrong year.
May is listed as the twenty sixth, which is a Friday.
May for twenty fifth.
Continuing on July. Is listed the twenty eighth, which is also a Friday. So I'm assuming that should be the twenty seventh. This is why we need John as secretary of the board.
We'll check all this stuff.
And we're not, we're not quite done yet. September uh, the twenty seventh is a Wednesday. So I'm thinking the twenty eighth might be the day we want. And then we'll just jump all the way to twenty twenty four. January, excuse me, yeah, January seventh, is that uh?
That's a Sunday.
It's a Sunday.
Oh, my goodness.
So just not sure.
Trying to leave you guys with some excitement.
Oh, my goodness.
No.
So would that be, what day would we be meeting in January?
January eight. Or sorry, it's January.
Monday.
Isn't it usually the first Thursday, the fourth, right?
January fourth.
Of twenty twenty four.
Okay. And if anybody wants to spot check the others, I think all the rest. Go on Thursdays, or at least the appropriate day, so.
When this is finalized, uh, if someone would mind.
I'll change it tomorrow and send it out to you.
Thank you.
She was testing. She was. Well, I appreciate that.
I don't know what happened.
I thought I was going crazy. I I got out two different calendars. There's no way this is happening.
Probably my outlook.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, blame outlook, maybe.
No. For a Leo or something. Okay, well, that was the thing at it. So thank you for that.
We did, uh, Mandy, we also changed one Q I council meeting. I don't know if that's if that's.
Be on February.
Oh, and then and then the finance meetings would change all relative to new dates too. So do you want to just?
I'll just take a little peek out.
Wait, I see. All right, thank you.
Right, is any, anything to do? Or is there somebody asking? Which uh? This can't be. Are you doing anything anymore for commissioners? You know?
I do remember the answer.
Has that just completely?
Yeah, I I don't know. I don't know that they decided. I know they're really struggling after the annual meeting. I should kind of determine what the format is going to be.
Okay.
Last year, I think that was all wrong.
Who said two part like? CEO's no wonder actually there's one of them. Yeah, sad to see that one fizzle if that's what's happening, but.
I will provide that feedback.
Thank you.
So just because I know that will pass is um, is the board's input that you'd like to return to the Shalane meeting or?
But the networking there was invaluable. I really got so much out of that.
I think the reason they decided to make the leap away from Shalane was because the confidence had gotten so big. Um, but having all commissioners, all of the governance folks in one place was really valuable to you. So it's all a wall or Shalane.
One place is uh, is what your preference is.
I I like the the format. Shalane was definitely a bonus, but I really didn't like the format and. Kind of being just the nature of. Who would attend that if it really lends itself to growth over time or fairly static competition?
I felt like once they sort of had the the virtual upstairs and the in person downstairs. Um, you know, they'd done that a couple of years before COVID and it felt like there was a little more elbow grip there. And and now that we're all more, you know, adapted, we're more used to virtual, it may be that um, Shalane makes more sense now, so.
All right.
I'll share that. Thank you.
So so we we Dan is going to Shalane twice, one for us and one for them.
Oh, yeah.
Or strategic. Previously was combined. We did it.
Yes.
Just a trip, you know, so both purposes. All right, so um, if there's no more discussion about the calendar, we'll move on to C E O annual evaluation. Um, which falls to Matt and me. Form. Yeah, this is my first time meeting evaluation. I believe that we need to need to discuss. Um, do you, I don't see any to change the format necessarily of. How it's run unless anybody else has input about that, about how it. I feel like it's not broken, so we shouldn't fix it.
Like we take, we've done evaluations uh, with the board and with the senior leadership team. We discussed the evaluations with senior leadership team and with the board.
And provide a summary.
Provide a summary. Uh, is there any input on this process from? either board members or the anybody on the senior leadership team who thinks it needs to be adjusted, or are people happy with the process as it stands?
I'm dependent.
And Julie, do you have any suggest, anything that you need from, because I know, I remember the first time we did this, you were the one who requested it because you wanted some feedback, or regular feedback. Are you happy with the way we've been doing it?
I particularly appreciate that input from senior leadership and from the board. I would ask that Dr. Martin has a well, let's say, physician leadership team now. That would be good. And I know you reach out to the foundation board and hospital district two as well, so sort of my my big constituents would be nice here.
We've done hospital district two before. I don't think, I don't remember if we've reached out to the foundation or to the.
Believe they were invited.
Okay.
Divided to participate.
But so we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I would appreciate it.
Any suggestions or feedback from senior leadership team on the process? Are you guys, anything that you want changed, or does it seem okay? All right. So we, what we've done in the past, get written comments, and then we've met with you to sort of talk through some things, and that helps to kind of fill in the gaps a little bit.
Identify some common themes.
But we'll continue to do that if you guys are happy with that process.
So then what we need to do is distribute the evaluation form for members and senior leadership. And then, I'm trying to recall, is that is that form, does that translate to position leadership as well, or do you think tweaks might need to be made? Okay. Okay, and then and so we will determine how soon to get those back. It is October 27th. It is almost November. Do you recall how long we gave last one, the two weeks?
I don't remember, but two weeks seems like a good.
Okay, so two weeks to have those returned, and then time we can schedule a time to meet with senior leadership to discuss as a group.
Do you use Manus' gun? Sort of shepherd that process?
Yes, and I'm happy to look back at our our process and and help help out, so we can connect, Erica, and I'm happy to help.
Fantastic. Thank you, Manus. Okay, so probably the sooner we start looking at dates to meet you and me with senior leadership better, just before calendars get full, we're heading into the holiday season. So do we like, do you like doodling? Is that, is that, what's the preferred way for finding a date these days? Is it doodle? I like doodle. Do people use doodle anymore?
Or is there a particular time that everybody tends to be available because there's a regular meeting that you guys have?
Definitely have Advent team. But that.
But that's.
Probably want to take that away.
Leadership.
No.
That might be a separate.
Yeah, it might need to be a separate.
But I don't think we met with everybody else either, though.
Oh. Julie, you asked to include them.
Would you like us to have, I mean, I'm certainly open to meeting with senior leadership to discuss and then also position leadership?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so it's like we'll try to find two dates that work.
Yeah, and I can help on with our calendars and look and outlook, and then then Erica, you and I can connect, and we can see what works for the board, too.
Have a decent amount of flexibility in the evening, so hopefully we can find something. And so then I will write a note then that I will be working with Landa and Mandy about dates and process. Does that sound right?
Well, not Mandy.
Yeah.
Oh.
Turns out she's not very good with calendars, though.
I got you.
Yeah. Okay, so for posterity, anybody watching this ten years in the future. This must be Mandy's last last word by us, and you've been incredible, and you're going to be so missed.
Yes, you are.
Yeah. So. Anyhow, I will, I will work with somebody about dates. I'll maybe I'll send out a doodle poll. I don't. Is doodle dorky? That's what I want to know.
It's okay.
We'll figure this out. We're gonna have to figure out how to go along with it.
I think we're looking for what's something like early to mid. I mean, early part of December, like before the 15th of December. Think that's too soon. I mean, we want to get it in before, I think ideally we'd get to get some feedback to Julie by the end of that that calendar year.
Right, right. So thinking of the surveys, the forms go since we know people have two weeks to remit them. But then we're crashing in on Thanksgiving, so we'll get past Thanksgiving and then maybe get me early December to discuss and then have a final evaluation to share. I mean, this I'm going. Okay, that sounds like a a good goal. Does that work for you, Julie?
Sure does.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Let me just write some notes before I forget what I just said. Okay. I'll be in touch with some. Okay, and then more point in which I added earlier, we reinstated coffee with the commissioner, and it was a great, really great turnout. The chief takeaway I had from I I'm not, oh, John, John was there as well. It was John and myself at coffee with the commissioner earlier this month. My chief takeaway was the the calming drive and concern that those in attendance had to serve the community. It was that was the under underlying theme of all of it, to to serve our community to our best ability. And in that, that's all in the context of, I always feel like I can be struck with lightning whenever I say this post-COVID. We call it that. There's probably no hard line of calling it post-COVID, but.
You're saying that through a mask.
So being multiple years beyond the very beginning of the pandemic, we'll put that. It looks a lot different now than it did in 2019. 2019. I know that volumes seem high then. Volumes are higher now. And as much as I want 2019 back, I don't think that's what we're gonna get. And so hearing the concerns of people that they realize that it's it's different now. I think that this presents us, I feel sadness about it, but I also feel like it presents us with opportunity to achieve. And so one of, one of the the central points was how how things happen in the emergency department, just how how busy the emergency department is and and how that relates to serving our community. So I just wanted to open it up to a little bit of discussion. I want to make sure that we're keeping that top of mind. As far as emergency care goes, I heard from some people that they feel that we have a sicker population now. Other people have a different take on it. Some some believe that the sickness has shifted into a greater mental health component. And I I don't know if that's just more of those people showing up at our door where they previously, you know, were present, but not necessarily at at our door. So any thoughts on emergency care of community? I know that this is a big challenge that the entire well, but entire country is is grappling with right now. And I I just, I think it's important that we keep this top of mind and and discuss it from from the country.
I can make one comment about that. Talk to Ken and Lindsay about this quite a bit, too. And with the shortage of medical care, especially in the family practice area, everywhere. More people do not have family doctors or doctors. So we're seeing a lot of people just walk in illnesses who could have been seeing their family doctor if they had one.
I was talking to one of the radiology technicians, and he was telling me about how the expert in the emergency department is also impacting radiology. He's told me that, like last Monday, or we were the month before, they did almost twice as many CAT scans than they do on a regular day. Because, and a lot of them were from out of the area people. And so, you know, so our ER is serving people that aren't in Kentuck County. And we used to serve people that weren't Kentuck County that would wander in free with because they might get sick when they were passing through, but these are living someplace else, and they're coming up here. So I I also think that when we discuss the emergency department busyness, that we also need to understand how that impacts other departments, because I'm sure it also impacts our lab department, too, because there's a lot of times that lab work needs to be drawn. So and the pharmacy also gets impacted by it, too. So it's it's a a big chunk of the hospital that it needs to package.
And Terry, I appreciate your point about that CT being used so much, and it just really drives home the need for redundancy in system, in equipment and resources, because yeah, that's just crippling if if we have no redundancy, the machine goes down or. So I'm glad to see that there's redundancy for many things on the horizon in our plans. And I've spoken with Julie about this at length, and I'm really heartened that she's on board with this, finding new sustainable measures to handle this 2020, or excuse me, no. This is 2022. Right, go on here. To handle 2022 and beyond, and what was that you called it? The, or ideas, the yes to idea, the yes to. You have a great way of saying that, that bring the ideas to you. Yeah, that people have ideas on what and and resource needs and such. Please bring those up. I I love good brainstorm and and I know that we went through the whole route of how people bring things up. There's departmental.
So so basically, I think, you know, one of the frustrations is we're continuing to post physicians for RNs and for docs, and we know those resources are very, very scarce. So the challenge, and we started the discussion with Nikki and DeeDee and with Dr. Lindsay, particularly with the emergency department, is we can, we'll hire the RNs if we get the RNs, we'll hire the physicians if we get the physicians. But we also have to start building what we can, so what labor force is actually available to support those providers. So one of the things we are looking for, though, is, you know, it is this realization that we came to a few years ago or a while ago with regard to CT being the only hospital in the county. We owe it to the hospital, to to our community to build the redundancy in CT. And but we also identified over the last couple of weeks, was it, about our CR?
It was two weeks ago.
Yeah, so so we have to start stepping up to that obligation on behalf of the community to have redundant equipment and to look for ways we can support our clinical staff to take care of the patients. And again, wishing for RNs and wishing for physicians and APCs is not gonna do it. We've we've talked for years about working to the top of your license, and I'm very deliberately staying away from that language because we have talked that way for years. And this is new, and this is real, and it's very serious. And it's the only way we're gonna get through this flood of patients. And a couple of things I think are going on in this community, Terry's point, I think we are getting patients from Yakima, who even drive up here, go shopping, be seen in the emergency department, go back home and get settled in in the time it would take you to get registered in the emergency department in Yakima. So we can, we are continuing to serve people much more quickly, more thoroughly, and 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 better, in that we have an outstanding emergency department. So but we're also seeing people who otherwise, who sometimes left our community and said, I'm done with KDH, I'm gonna go to Yakima, it's a clock. They can't get in there. So KDH is a great alternative for those folks, but when they're following Stacy's folks and Dr. Martin and Dr. Dis' folks, they're overwhelmed. There's, they've never been busier. And also something that Terry alluded to, last month, Rhonda presented some data on imaging at the emergency department. Not only do we have more patients, but those patients are driving to multiple images now. So it really is just everywhere we're looking. So the solution in the emergency department is that we need to shore up our DI staff and our lab staff. We need to work very closely with hospital medicine in order to admit patients, either in patients or observation patients. And we also continue to have absolutely no access to transferring patients. So that hospitals like Yakima, they're down to 126 beds all over the city. People are closing units and closing beds because we don't have the staff to support them.
How many beds did they have pretty close?
Two, twenty six.
Yeah, yeah.
So so patients are coming sicker, and there's no place for us to transfer patients who we typically would have looked for a higher level of care for. So it is, you know, and again, it's something we say every day to ourselves, we're not going back to 2019. We have got to build a a different support system for caregivers and in different ways of their care. It's frustrating. It's also, to your point, people are focused on this community and are looking for ways to serve the community. So I think the energy is really, really good. It it's gonna be a long and frustrating haul if people have, whether it's telemedicine, a community health worker, more work outside the home or the walls of the hospital. How can we do this with them? But it is, it's not gonna be business as usual. Though, you know, while we were having a pandemic, a bunch of people retired, and the baby boomers arrived in the emergency.
Yeah, I think I read an article about the baby boomer crash, so maybe like a few articles about that.
Just in the budgeting process that we're going, in the process of doing it for 2023 right now, we are budgeting for those higher volumes, and we're also adding expenses related to those higher volumes, you know, staff and everything else. So we are, you know, to the to the degree that we're have the ability, we're we're planning and preparing for that.
Not a surprise, the first time that I was ever asked about resource management and the aging baby boomer population was when I was interviewing for medical school at the University of Kansas 30 years ago. And they wanted, that was one of the interview questions. It's, what has changed over the last 25 years is we knew we had a shortage of general surgery, general psychiatry, and the primary care specialties. But 15 years ago, we were saying if we didn't graduate another anesthesiologist for 15 years, we'd still have a lot. Reality is now that we have shortages across virtually every specialty. Yeah, it's one of the reasons that we have so many older provider positions posted. I I think our emergency department, of course, is insufficient to run itself. They're not used to having people on the way around. They're not used to the numbers that they're seeing, but the reason that they're seeing those numbers is partly understating their, and partly that they've developed an excellent reputation for service. One of the challenges that I have is, you've all heard me say, or Julie quote me, is saying that we're short 17 to 18 primary care teams to meet the needs of the county. But our primary care clinics are bursting at the seams, and I don't have places to put them. So how do we expand our footprint without building new buildings? And starting to talk about it, it's like primary care at home, and try to figure out how we can. how we can better meet that need, but it's still going to come down to staffing, to the point of Julie's earlier point about equipment as single points of value. We also have some programs where our staffing has single points of value. I've come to think of it as systemic on COVID. These are consequences of the pandemic that we're going to be dealing with in the foreseeable future.
So can I, another thing I'd like to say is recruiting and retaining people. I think we have some outstanding strategies about how to do that. But a huge piece of that is going to be culture. Because the systems around us and the hospitals around us are doggy dog environments right now. They are disposable, I mean $30,000 for a sign on bonus. Now, here we don't care about you, we're going to run you under the ground. Creating a culture where we continue to be a community hospital, cares, partners with its workforce to care for its community is going to be critical to our success. It's not all about the wage scale, we absolutely have to be competitive. And how we treat one another, how we develop one another, the nuance of the benefits and the development opportunities that we provide people. Culture has never been more important to our ability to retain people because it is not a client portal out there right now.
I believe that we have really great individuals part of this organization. And I feel like our brainstorms, our ideas are extremely fruitful. If somebody has an idea for us streamlining this or tweaking that for a better outcome for patients or workload, where do they take this information?
You know, if it presents itself as an issue, I read every single verge report and they go into coffee buckets in my brain and that's how we've dealt with it in the past. I went walking down the hallway, but what do you mean we only have one CR? Coffee or verge report. So it worsens way into our quality work. But also, you know, the physicians and the providers should be participating in that budget process. Every single one of our department directors has department meetings. You know, I look at people like Stacy Bott who has an entire wall that's her visual ideas and catches. And so there is a lot of opportunity for people to participate. If they, they do need to know that they're heard. And it's, you know, one of the things that I know Scott finds frustrating and I find frustrating is we don't, we don't hear ourselves saying no very often, but people still aren't asking. You know, so it's the answers now. If they assume the answers, but yeah.
So I've got some ideas.
Yeah.
Then pass. Yeah, alright.
We also, just, we do have an employee suggestions link on our internet as well. And we do get some things there and we route them to, you know, the appropriate departments. I wouldn't say major concerns go there, through there, but more, you know, signage, ideas and things like that. But, but that is another avenue as well we do have on our internet, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you for all that. I didn't plan that this session of talking about coffee with the commissioner would be intent that I would necessarily sold anything tonight. But people took time out of their lives to really play our hearts out and what means a lot to them. So I just, I wanted to make sure that we had that conversation and so thank you all for that.
We want to continue with this format for coffee with the commissioner. Do you think it works? That's good.
So I, I thought that this was a fantastic meeting, the Coffee with Commissioner event. I don't necessarily see the need to switch it up, perhaps augmenting it with other opportunities. But I, what, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I wanted to say, you know, Eric and I spent over three hours with the people that showed up and we really appreciated their willingness to come and, and again, just kind of open up. And I think it's been a little bit of pent up, you know, it's been a couple of years since we could do this. And so it was great to meet with them, to hear their thoughts. We would try to make it clear, we, we're not here on a, you know, personnel issue, you know, one-to-one problem fixes. We're here to understand any larger things that at our level, we can slowly try to, you know, we have discussions and make decisions. It's another bit of the information that informs us and hopefully helps us make better decisions. So, yeah, I just, I appreciate their willingness to speak so freely. And again, they took time out of their day because they're passionate about this organization. And, but like any large organization, there are little frustrations that creep in. And so, you know, Eric and I even took a week or so after that to each kind of think about many of that again to say, what do you remember here? What are the things that stuck out to you? And it was a very useful exercise from my point of view. And we had a lot of commonality with things that were kind of resonating with us. So, you know, there's not a great takeaway yet to publicly distribute, you know. But again, for me and the role I have, and I think the role Eric has and the other commissioners as they go through this process, I'm really glad that people took time to do it and spoke so freely. And then hopefully out of that, there'll be some things that we'll be talking about and strategizing and so forth. But.
Agreed.
Yeah, so I don't, that has much clarity to it, but that's as much as I'm comfortable saying at this point.
I got to do a coffee with commissioner once a few years ago before the pandemic really kicked in that hard. And everything that you both have talked about, I had the same, you know, impact by the people that came in and talked to me. And since I was a fairly new commissioner at the time, it also helped me see a lot of the faces of the organization. And I think that it came with the coffee with the commissioner, I would be glad to do it again with somebody. I think it would be very good because we're keeping our hands in our pockets because we're not doing personnel issues, we're just hearing about the whole organizational issue and things like that. Those are things that will help us also be a better commissioner.
On the topic of coffee with the commissioner, I wanted to make a suggestion to the board and see what your thoughts are on that. And I like the idea of continuity so that if people return, if staff or community members return to discuss that subsequent, that there's a continuity in who's attending coffee with the commissioner. And so there's the knowledge from the last meeting carrying over to the next. Then my hope, if the board is agreeable, that we would strive as much as possible so that of the two members that attended the prior meeting, one of them would attend the next meeting with a new commissioner. And then of those two, one of them would continue, would kind of link it down the line and just give, give that connection and continuity to the process. So what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I like the continuity on that.
Okay.
Because it does help to make sure you succeed better by knowing how the process is going on and what they've already experienced in the past. How often are we planning to do this, every month or every other month?
Only in my recollection.
It used to be every other month.
Wasn't really, okay, so.
And it looked like maybe Bob, were you going to say something, Bob? I couldn't quite tell.
No, no, I agree. I think that would be the consistency in having some overlap makes sense too.
I believe we used to be monthly when we first instituted and then we pulled back to every other month because attendance wasn't super high.
And I think maybe that's the thing to do is go monthly. And if it dwindles and the interest goes away, then we can start to spread it out a little bit.
So we should perhaps look, I don't know if it's too late to grab space for November.
I mean, Julie, do you have thoughts on doing it monthly or what's your?
Well, I agree, there was some pent up desire, you know, we've been doing the electronic forums. We did meetings over the other year and calling on previously. I know the day you had talked to commissioners, I've been around the hospital reminding people and a lot of departments said, oh yeah, we have somebody who's going. So people want to be, want to have that conversation with you. I also remember months in a row where you sat there literally during coffee and nobody showed up.
Awfully looked at each other.
So, so now I would run with it and they'll, and again, there's things people want to hear from commissioners. And they want to hear about strategy, they want to hear about, you know, what next moves they're going to do. So, agreed.
Okay, so I guess we'll, we'll go with monthly and if it seems to dwindle, then we can switch.
Would there be any benefit to go to them? You know, pick units at a time and just say commissioner or two commissioners are going to be here. Somebody wants to chat with them, maybe even easier, or is that just creating new complications?
Are you saying instead of or in addition to?
Either way, or every other month, we all, you know, we're in the cafe every other month. And in between month, we pick a department to say, hey, a couple of commissioners are going to show up. Anybody wants to stay in chat? Again, I just, I'm trying to remove the friction points. Like we have one person who normally wouldn't be here on this day, but really want to meet with us and, you know, pay the extra effort and out of their schedule to drive here and.
I have found this board has been active in GIMAs. If it's a department you want to go talk to about their operations and about their issues, I would do this again. But they really appreciate the opportunity, show up at operations, show up what they're doing. Particularly with patient care areas, it's difficult to plan a meeting when. But the GIMA, I mean, getting back to those are GIMAs, I think is a great idea. People love, you know, all of that.
The GIMAs, I took, we get very positive feedback, which is wonderful. Coffee with commissioner, I got some of the stuff that they are more careful to talk about. So you get, I mean, two different types of information depending on the scenario we've created. So, I mean, they're both good.
I think it might be disruptive to patient care though.
That's a very good point, yeah.
And I hear you saying you're not going to get, because usually the leader's with them too.
Yeah.
Or they're in the middle of doing work, so they may not say something. But that may happen because they're in that work environment anyway.
I'm just trying to think of those people that, you know, the 4:30 or 5 o'clock start times, just not ideal for the world they work in and they're missing out.
And I would suggest a 7:00 AM or such PM.
For a off schedule of time, see if there's available.
Yeah, I think to rotate it a little bit, you know, as you rotate commissioner, rotate times, rotate.
Just kind of take some steps to us to get it, I don't see what works.
The other thought is that one outcome from the GIMAs may be that as they become more comfortable with you as people, they're more likely to show up for coffee with the commissioner.
And I often, you know, we used to, the GIMAs more, I would make it quick to feel, email me if you want to meet or talk or something. You know, we're accessible and to try to lower again that barrier for any reason they're not communicating. But again, it always circles back, we're not there to fix individual employee issues, but there might be more global things that they can help us understand. We can make better decisions at the level that we're working, yeah.
I thought the advertisement for the coffee, for the commissioner was really good. The announcements that you sent out had a really good comment in there about the coffee with commissioner. And I think most of the employees hear about the announcements because there's always things in there that's good. So I think most employees knew that there was coffee going on. But I think doing a few more GIMAs around is, is really good. A couple of times I've been at the hospital for healthcare issues and I ran into somebody and they gave me a baby GIMA because they saw me there and they were talking with me and I was able to chat about it. Cause I know Scott, one time, he showed me the hole in the wall over in the OB wing. And that, that wall looks really good on the outside now. And I was thinking, now I might want to do a GIMA in the, in the OB wing just to see how wonderful that has been recreated and stuff like that. Because you wouldn't even know that that wall had been damaged, now it looks beautiful.
Did you want to pick another commissioner that you could pair it with for November session?
It could be me or you, I don't have a preference.
You don't want to spot.
Okay.
Mandy, did you want?
My big question is who's our?
Do you want these ones opened up to the public for future ones or just kept in-house? How do you want them noticed in the paper?
I wasn't aware when we went into the last one that it wasn't open to the public, but because it was so well-intended, I think more people, it might have been kind of difficult to give everybody the attention that they deserve for that. Do you think maybe doing one more just off, just now?
I think one more hospital, again, I feel the low light, it feels like again, there's still a lot of people that probably have a chance to talk and be heard.
And then we can open it up after that. And then who's my person to ask about scheduling that?
Do you want me to do this? I'm happy to.
No, you got it. We'll say Mandy, the generic Mandy.
The generic Mandy, one of the Mannys will help in there. Okay, so we'll eventually make that happen, it'll be great. Last thing I wanted to say about Coffee with Commissioner. I turned it to me this late, but the cafeteria space is incredible. That was such a nice venue to me, very inviting, very comfortable. It felt spacious, yet private, it was, it was really nice, so.
We just need a sign that says, you know, come on in. Because we closed the door so we didn't make so much noise in the cafeteria and we were worried some people might turn around and leave.
I think it's a private, different sort of.
Yeah, so we need to keep it cracked a little bit.
Keep watching for people. Yeah, come on in. So, yeah, I agree. So something indicating that they should feel free to enter.
Yeah.
So, okay, there's no further comments about Coffee with the Commissioner, we can move on because we're trying to get away from this. All right, thank you all very much. So moving on to reports and dashboards, quality with Mandy Olson.
Do you want me to mention the board pharmacy thing or did you want to do it or not? The board of pharmacy is here today and Rhonda's not here to report and she does mention some other people that could fill in. But they had a very good survey, the staff that interacted with the surveyors were wonderful. Rhonda said about, we have, the pharmacy has, we have a really competent staff who are comfortable with surveyors, a tribute to KDH leadership. There were some findings, we'll have 10 days, they have 10 business days to return the report to us and then when we have 10 days to respond, calendar days. Just a few things that are really typical of surveys, like unlabeled medication or left unsecured. But really small things, like a crack in the flooring in one area, so.
Is this a surprise visit that they just?
They do, uh huh, and it's like other surveys where it's unannounced. So we knew they were coming, but I think we've expected it for months and months and months.
When I was coming in the hospital, Nassar was out there chatting with them. And I stopped by and said, hi, Nasser. And he introduced me to the board inspectors. And I chatted with them a little bit because I've seen a lot of those in my life personally. And they, they were interested that I was a commissioner. And I chatted with them and they said that the, that the pharmacy was doing really well and they were very happy with, with the visit. I also told you that Nassar is a very great pharmacy director here because he's been doing wonderful things and we hear about him and compliance reports and other things. And he's a good, and they thanked me for giving them a little time because I was really hoping to know what a great pharmacy department we have here and how well that they take care of things. So anyway, that was kind of interesting that I ran into them. And they, they said that this hospital pharmacy was very easy to do their review than some of the other hospitals that they would do review there. So I thought that was really interesting.
Yeah, a review of the exo items, there were absolutely no surprises. It was.
Very common.
Yeah.
Things and fortunately not that, that many. They did review the clinics too as well, faculty SOP ED, insurance CCUs. So. I suppose, sorry.
Stay tuned, we will have a fun correction. As Mandy said, seven business days to report to, seven calendar days.
And then I promised in my retort that I would have new data and I did bring it. So that's not very helpful. I mean, I was about, I think the last announcements I saw said we were 46% complete on getting documentation of immunization or declination.
Do you think the urgency just isn't there since everybody's coming to the rescue home?
Absolutely. We used to be at 94, 95, 96%. I just saw a hospital, it's not called Hospital Compare anymore, it's called Care Compare. Just had a new release and so I was looking on there at vaccination rates. And so for last year, I. And so for last year, I think we were in the seventies and we were still better than most places. So interestingly though, our COVID vaccination rate was 93% and that was above the state and national average.
And then I'm hearing in the school district, they have only three positive results coming in.
We haven't seen that here. I just, Anna mentioned that to me yesterday, but we're hearing it's coming, but we haven't seen a lot of that in our surveillance.
Okay, I'm not sure where these people went for their. Hopefully it's a easier season.
I think the mask helps and we've seen that in healthcare, but not other places aren't wearing that. Doctor, I will mention too, speaking of, you know, masks and COVID changes. There's been a lot of swirl in healthcare community about, oh, we're going to go away from masks now that these emergency orders are. And we're like, what are you guys talking about? That doesn't make any sense. That's not how we're interpreting all these different agencies' rules that are slow in effect. And I did just, I don't tweet, but Dr. Larson did send me a tweet from the secretary, Washington Secretary of Health, Dr. Shaw, that clarifying that on November 1st, just today, the current requirements for face coverings will remain in effect in healthcare and correctional facilities, settings. However, we actively reviewing and determining which situations they will continue to apply and plan to come back mid-November with updates.
Did the governor rescind his order?
Yes. Well, it's expected.
It expires. But again, our masking requirement comes from the Secretary of Health.
And OSHA still has an emergency temporary standard that you have to evaluate your healthcare facility and determine what level of risk you have. And in the way you go through the decision tree, unless you can say that no one will enter your facility that potentially has COVID and all of your employees are vaccinated, you have to wear a mask in healthcare. So OSHA has said for months they're going to make permanent a standard related to COVID, but they haven't done it yet. And I honestly think part of the reason we're knowledgeable about that is because I've got folks like Anna Skyler and Nicole Hilderman that are reading through these materials and other people just don't have the resources to know it that deeply. And it is really down in the deep of OSHA documentation or, you know, all in eye.
Be able to pick out the nuanced changes.
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of pressure to change because it's, it was lovely to see people faces at team such training and to connect with people and see people smile. And so I really understand why people don't want to wear masks anymore. But we want to make sure we're keeping people at work, especially when staffing is so difficult.
So for the foreseeable future, we remain?
Yep.
Best. Thank you.
And I wonder what it will do for healthcare long-term, right? Like, we've always had isolation precautions for people with conditions. You know, you walk into a clinic with a cough, you're supposed to put a mask on, whether it's COVID times or not. I think it'll put some more importance on that. And there may be areas like emergency department where the staff choose to wear more P P E. And, you know, proactively wear P P E instead of just for isolation precautions in the future. I don't have any other.
Application story is really nice of people. Haven't had a chance to read it. I think that's a really nice one.
I have a question on page 23, the three over and three down, the pain reassessment after medication. If you know, just briefly, why that trend down in the Med Search? What is the challenge of a timely reassessment?
Well, sometimes the challenge is, did you document it at the time that you did the reassessment? So.
Get done, but just not documented.
Right. And did I document it in the place that this report picks up on? The, and correct me if I'm wrong, Vicki, but the nursing directors have been working with Amy Diaz to try and get these reports as fast. It used to only get a monthly, then they're getting the weekly so that they can be reviewing more real time. Like, hey, what happened in this case? And can I connect with that staff, you know, so it's not like a month later where I'm asking, you know, hey, what happened? They also, the report used to pull by, who did the? It had, it had something funny about the nurse that it attributed it to. So I think there, it was pulling the staff person who did the reassessment, not who administered the medication initially. And so that's much more helpful, right? Like, who do I need to follow up with? So that's some things they've been working on. I don't know. What else am I missing?
No, that's it. It's a matter of documentation of the effects of the medication. And we do that instinctively.
We know we're in the room.
We're always in the room. The patients are always reporting. It's a matter of them documenting it and they have to document it in a specific place in order for that information to be pulled. And in turn, you can document things in 20 different places. It may have been documented in a place within a pool. We're trying to train people to consistently document the same place, but. I think if we were to, and I think there was a survey question about how was your pain managed? Overall on patients after they go home. And I think we manage their pain very well, but we are poor documentators, so.
And that's it. Our survey just look poor, right? Yeah. If nothing documented it, how do we know you did it? We have to see the documentation. And so that's really what it makes it.
Thank you for the explanation.
Any other questions for Mandy?
Oh, I have one other thing.
Yes.
We got to finally put it in announcements. It's not embargoed without the stroke measures that we received, which is a gold award. And it means that we've achieved a certain level of performance on all, I think at least 75% or 85% of our stroke measures for two consecutive years, which is really great. And we, Claudia, I don't know if any of you remember Claudia, but she used to always say, we're going for gold, we're going for gold. I need to text her because she'd be so proud that we got. So this is a big achievement and we're really proud of our ER, imaging, pharmacy staff, Med Search C C U. They all contribute to the care of our stroke patients. Soundliness of that.
Who awards that gold?
This is, get with the guidelines. It's an American Heart Association program and that's where we submit our data about each of our cases. It's a registry for stroke. They also do cardiac care. And they set standards for the care and those guidelines that we follow.
Okay, pretty good.
So like on the dashboard, the median type of C T or N R I, that's one of them.
Okay. Gold so very pretty.
Well, I wish it was an actual gold thing for the certificate of love. And that's all I really have now.
Okay, well, excellent. Thank you, Mandy.
Chief Executive Director, Mandy Peterson. My report is on page 125. I do have some updates. Just, well, first of all, I just mentioned briefly for on behalf of Hospital District Number Two. We do have the I F F, the firefighters union up there. We set up a negotiated contract with them and the bargaining unit was ratified, an agreement that was put before them. So that will go to the board next month, so. W S N A, again, I'd just like to say the folks that are working on the hospital side, Vicki, Dee Dee, Amy, Pravstead, Manda. It's, it's a really enlightening process to sit and talk with the folks from the bargaining unit. W S N A has four people at the table from their, from actual W S N A. So I think there's going to be some turnover there. They have a new attorney. We're going to have some new faces to work with in the future. But we learn a great deal and it's a great given back or given take back and torque with the staff during those negotiations. You learn a lot about what's come in friction in people's lives and relationships. And, you know, we start every negotiating session by saying, we have a really, really good contract. We don't want to change what we don't have to change. And that we don't use the contract to manage. That's not what that is for. So it's served us very well. We've had two sessions. I were a little frustrated with progress, but I think we were frustrated with progress after two sessions last time too. So I'm hopeful and again, really appreciate the nurses coming to the table to talk to us about what they want the next three years to look like. And the participation of the managers who can talk through real scenarios and hear from their nurses. Again, what their nurses are looking for. So really, really good process. Now I just want to take a minute to complain that Vicki is, everybody's leaving me. So I'm taking it all very, very personally. Vicki is retiring after a brief stint in nursing. And it could have passed out of the healthcare as I reported. So, and Dee Dee, we are very, very fortunate that Dee Dee is prepared to step into that role. Unfortunately, that leaves us with a huge set of shoes to fill in the emergency department. So we've already done recruiting for the nurse director who will step into Dee Dee's role. But in both of those transitions, we are going to enjoy continuity. So Dee Dee will be here to help. Shepherd will bring along her replacement. And Vicki and Dee Dee will work very, very closely over not just the next two months. But we hope to entice Vicki to stick around into 2023 as well, so.
I'm sad that she's retiring.
But she made it through the 90-day evaluation.
Really exciting, Dee Dee stepping into that position. Very filled with the choice there. Great opportunities ahead and grandchildren opportunities that this will maybe be able to blame grandchildren.
I blame the grandchildren, yeah. So. All these young people quitting children. Well, and, you know, I really want to give credit to the normalness of the succession planning that went on there. Dee Dee's been, you know, signaling for some time that she, she really wants to develop her leadership skills and lead. And we were able to make that happen. That makes us one very, very fortunate organization. And Vicki has been an outstanding mentor for her. And when they broke the news to the other nurse directors, there was a little bit of crying and then a lot of celebrating. And so lots to look forward to. And we really don't let Vicki get very far.
It's an embodiment of the strategic plan, the partnerships and having people rise up within the organization. I just think that's great.
And then, of course, Mandy Reed, this is her last board meeting and she keeps committing to doing things tomorrow. But tomorrow will be her last day. She's also agreed we're doing executive assistant interviews. We've concluded those now and have narrowed the field. So we'll hire somebody soon and we'll keep Mandy on per diem as well to help come back and show this person the ropes. So as you all pointed out, Mandy is an absolute delight to work with. And I'm really not looking forward to Mandy. It's going to be really tough because somebody has to make my coffee. More mornings than I care to count. She has found me standing in front of the coffee machine just staring at me.
So is Monday going to be a trick and not a treat?
Yes, Monday's going to be a tough one. Anyways. We have negotiations, so. Yeah. And so I don't plan to lose track of, Mandy in Hope Springs Eternal, we hope to have her back someday. So thank you for all you do. Let me see. The last thing I want to talk about, and Ron is here to help you with this. The bid on the expansion project, we had that project out to bid and we did extend the bidding process. And on Monday, I think at 1:00 PM, we're supposed to open bids. We're disappointed in the number of contractors that we have who are still actively working on that. So Ron, any words of wisdom from the architect or from you or?
Well, there's been very few questions from the contractors. So that makes me feel pretty good that we did our due diligence in the plan. So at least it's, appears to be a good indicator. So when the bids come back in, we go through a vetting process and primarily K D A is responsible for doing that. But there's quite a few qualifications that they have to meet in order to do the project. And most of it is directly around healthcare. And so they have to have done at least two projects within the last five years in healthcare, in patient care areas. And I think the dollar amount was at least a million dollars in that situation. And also, we extended that same qualification to the mechanical and electrical contractors because they're really a pretty big piece of that. So they have to meet those same qualifications. And also, the project manager has to have at least five years' experience in healthcare. So I think we've got some pretty good tools in there to vent it out and see what happens.
The market right now, there's just a lot of construction going on out there. The workforce available, the companies available to bid on this project. As I mentioned, there's not as many as we would like to see. And we will be working with the architect to do some additional due diligence in vetting the general contractor and making sure that the subs will be available and that we can rely on this project coming the way that we anticipate that it will. So I think there'll be some extra questions again on Monday, we'll know exactly how many contractors we have bidding on this work.
And so, Ron, Monday, is that include the extension that was originally going to be earlier?
Yeah, I think it was the week before we were going to do that. But it didn't get extended to as far as we wanted to. There was a couple of contractors that came in late that then subsequently dropped out. So we didn't feel the need to go out any farther than that.
And what time do you open the bids?
I want to say it's 1:00 o'clock. I can check that real quick. Yeah, 1:00 o'clock.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? All right. Thank you, Joyce. Operations, big natural, big mostly office.
My report is there. I just wanted to comment on the discussion. We, Dee Dee and I have talked a lot about some of the concerns there with the increased numbers and the staffing issues and all of those. And we've met with staff. I think we also have to keep in mind that what the population's going through. The staff are going through the same things. There's just a lot of other dynamics outside of their work having to deal with just with the pandemic and children and family and just lotifying life. And, and we're never, like, I love what you said, but I love that you recognize that we're never going back to 2019. Gone are those days. And I think part of that, the staff are grieving and moving upward and forward is a struggle sometimes. But we've, we've worked really hard in trying to communicate and let them vent and share their concerns. And a lot of that's gone through safe staffing, which I really appreciate that committee. And so we're just, we're right there with you in those thoughts. And whatever we can do to make things better and for our staff. And there aren't other things that, I was talking to my supervisors. We have had more requests from facilities outside of our area to take their patients than ever before. We've had people drive up to our ER and get admitted here because they cannot see care in the afternoon. So it's a thing. It's a, it's a real thing. And the smaller areas, mostly Quincy, Othello, those hospitals too are just. And the smaller areas, mostly Quincy, Othello, those hospitals too are just wanting to care for their patients and don't have anywhere to send them, much like our ERs and. Staffing remains, you know, an issue. We have had some traction in OB and that surge, so we're really feeling good about that. OR is still a hotspot and so is the ER on nights. So I think you feel one night shift.
I did, one of our part-time people is extremely.
Yeah, that's wonderful. So that's a thing. And lots of education going on in departments, end of the year competencies and those types of things. Thank you. I guess that's it, I can take some questions.
Just trying to picture this escape room.
Oh, I know.
Like, I love escape rooms.
Yeah, that's, that was a brainchild of one of the OR staff who just, you know, took it upon herself to do the education. We have to have annual education every year on ruling that hypothermia. Seriously with our ERs, our OR staff and our PCU staff. So she made it just kind of fun. And had several sessions, I think, that's still going on, there's.
Mentioned this pacemaker, pacemaker battery exchange. That's a new service. Where, what do patients have to do prior to this?
So it's done in the OR and they're usually worked up by their cardiologist. If they already got a pacer, you know, those batteries need to be changed patiently. Don't know the lifetime span of all of those, but it's a ready surgery. And it's done in the OR, they're worked up and Dr. Hoppy does that. So the patient is, I was just talking to Amy about it yesterday, because we need temporary pacers and they need to be hooked up in the event there's some lag or some time where that battery isn't slipped in timely. So there's a lot of education. Jeanette Simonton is our nurse that's working on that education and working with, very closely with Dr. Hoppy on making those, sure those patients and staff are prepared for that. It's just a day, it's just a day surgery, very quick procedure and the patient goes home the same day.
And prior to our offering this service, they had to go elsewhere?
They had to go out, yes, yes. Usually in the West Side, I don't even know that Yakima's there. They do? They do, but they don't need more.
Great, so we may get, depending on the status, we may get.
But it's not designed like an Apple Watch, we just put a magnetic charger up to it, recharge it?
Lay on your wireless. Maybe someday.
I'm going to guess somebody's working on that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Because this is an incision, I mean, you're going into the skin and into the.
Yeah, the pacemaker's in a little pocket that they put in your chest and so they have to access that.
How large is it?
Well, some of them are so tiny.
Yeah, depends what year it was built.
Yeah, that's true.
Probably a quarter of that now.
Yeah, very tiny.
I was meeting at the state hospice and public care organization earlier this week and a nurse from Quincy from their emergency department was there and snagged me an act of those from Kidde House. And I said, yes, and she wanted to make sure that I thanked our nursing services for their cooperation. When we take the transfers from them, but most recently, they had a patient in their ED that we seen a month previous and we had a good history and they had enough response to patients. And so we were able to really support their care and they were, they expressed gratitude for the support and for the kindness that they received.
Community standing together like, that's fantastic. Any other questions for Vicky? I just want to back up a moment, I realized I skipped over Amanda's report. I wonder if you have anything else to say, maybe you gave your presentation, but I apologize for skipping over your report.
Oh, no, no problem at all. I don't have any other comments. And the only thing I will add is that there was some requests for some exit interview summary, so I did include that. So just let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you.
Great. Chief Ms. Rhonda is unexpectedly out with a family situation, but I will be happy to answer any questions. I make up answers if I don't know them.
Any thoughts or questions about Rhonda's report? For Julie, so she can make something up for us?
Just another shout out to the folks in pharmacy, just absolutely implacable. And we've all sort of added up to our eyebrows with surveyors, but they rose to the occasion once again.
I would like to say, yes, first of all, on that. Rhonda is involved in so many things and makes such a difference in so many ways. Just the district two meeting, joint meeting, one and two. That was fantastic. And it was long, but every moment was so fruitful. I feel like if we hadn't had an end time on it, we could have gone on for hours more discussing and collaborating. So thank you to everybody who made that possible, put that together, especially Rhonda. More than applause?
No.
Bye.
Stacey L. Day of Operations. Thanks, and my report's on pages 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35. Just feeling a little bulky. It's all my fault, it's all my fault. Days to third available established appointments, just like you're seeing increased volumes in, in the ER. It's not captured in this metric, but we are seeing increased volumes, especially in general surgery and vascular surgery. Memorial was nice enough to say, hey, if you need vascular care, go see KBH and here's all their contact information. So we actually had a PSR overtime party to work through over 200 referrals. We had just for general surgery, waiting for scopes. So we're seeing that impact also in the clinic significantly through referrals. And then just some updates real quick on the FME vaccine refrigerator out of temperature range. We do have, not my final financial cost of that, but just to replace those vaccines alone, it was $17,000, almost $700. So it was a significant impact to that clinic for that.
I have a question about that. So it says you got a letter from that, how did DOH like?
DOH, we submit our vaccine temperature logs to them on a monthly basis. So this proves DOH does actually record those records. They contacted the clinic and said, hey, this does not look right. We need you to dig a little bit deeper. It was a combination of really, it was one of those under counter refrigerators, not by a typical grade, but just more like dorm quality, home use quality. Our MA apprentice wasn't recording the temperatures correctly. She was getting confused between Fahrenheit and Celsius. The data logger that has alarms on it, the alarm was never set. So it never had any restrictions on it for alarms. And we ended up, there's three thermometers in there and all three were reading different temperatures. One was placed in the door, one was placed in the back, and then the data logger was placed at the top. So we, Stephanie did a wonderful job in work cause analysis and looking in the details in this. And pretty much everything that could be going wrong, absolutely did.
Did we get a new fridge?
We do have a brand new fridge. It is a nice big one with a glass door, easy to see it, it's beautiful.
Does it have its own integrated alarm system?
It does, yes. And Shelley Contreras was up there, lickety-split, working on that brand new work and training.
So, so just out of curiosity, DOH looked at this report and see there was an issue in the report back to us. Why did we not have a procedure so we would see it ourselves before it went to DOH for auditing, if you will?
Because the person who was recording the temperature was the one who actually reviewed it and submitted it to DOH. So now we've got two sets of eyes always looking at it instead of just one person.
So that was an educational opportunity.
Yes, it was a really good process learning for us.
How, when the patients were contacted, the vaccination was maybe not valid because of this? What, what are the responses?
Stephanie said, we've had a few people call and, and ask to get their appointment set up and get re-vaccinated. We haven't really heard a lot of concern for it. And we've got a plan to reach out to them multiple times. So we're tracking who's coming in, who has decided they're not going to do it and then making sure we follow up, keep up the simple pitch.
And then in the IT's database, does this automatically, do they? Something happening behind the scenes that creates these vaccines as potentially not valid or is that?
I don't think so. I think what'll just happen is they'll get the patient all these saying that it's been vaccinated twice. I don't think it cancels it out before you.
On the state database, it'll show the second vaccine and you can put a note in there if you, if you load it up correctly and say why you got it. Because it will appear, there'll be a little like star or something next to it or be underlined and say that that vaccine wasn't in the right processing area. But you can add a note to it. But since you tell the, the patient about it, why they got the second vaccine, they can always tell anybody if they have a question. But it will show up on the state, your station vaccine, because I've seen that on that, on that site myself.
So you said that the value that we had to throw was 17,700?
17,700 was about the product value.
If all 72 patients requested to be re-vaccinated, what's the value of the re-vaccination?
It'll be a couple thousand more. So I don't have that exact amount yet. So I'm waiting to track how many people come in and what that cost is for us. And then just a positive note on the medical assistant recognition week. So these were just little metal rings that they can place on the stethoscopes. One of the MA's has a first name that's not very common. And she was like, all my life as a little kid, I'd go to all those places and see magnets with names and I've always wanted something with my name on it. And she said, now I have it, I'm wearing it as a ring.
How special.
That's really neat. And then dermatology, if you haven't had a chance to see dermatology on the first floor of the MAC building, it is absolutely huge.
Which, which spaces?
This is, when you walked in, it is the old North Star area. So what we did is originally that waiting room has been walled in to get labs, some extra waiting room space. We tore down that wall and opened up the clinic back there. So they now have four exam rooms, office space for the providers, this beautiful reception area. So three PSRs work in there, checking patients in, out, doing the forms. It is a beautiful space.
So they're not in the entire space though, right?
No, we don't have the infusion space that they had for all the infusion days. We're not using that, that is just curtained off. So we're really just the four clinic rooms, consult room up front and the, and the registration area.
How's the waiting room doing for lab and?
It seems to be doing okay. There's quite a bit of seating still down there. So I haven't seen, a couple times I've walked through, it did not seem to be crowded at all.
Please speak about FME and phones.
Yes, so we've talked a little bit about the phone calls at FME before. And with the help of IT, Nathan Depp has been able to really drill down into looking at what is the true volume coming in for phone calls. He did the month of September in here and it's about call a minute. If you want to just try to simplify it, a call a minute. So we're looking at how many calls are coming in, what's the frequency of calls? About 30 to 40% of those phone calls we receive every day are duplicates. So why are patients calling us back? Well, we haven't returned the message, even though we say we will return it by end of business. Haven't heard anything, I'm calling back again. Or I didn't want to leave a message, I want to talk to a person, so I'm calling back again and I'm calling back again. So this is going to allow us to really drill down and try to figure out the issues of phones. We've got complaints on Google, we know we should further link the phones and we need to figure it out. So we're meeting with the vendors to look at what are some solutions there. We're also signing a contract with Lam for process improvement, quality process improvement. And we're going to pull together a team to really dive into the processes there and take a look at what can we fix that may not require staff increases and may not require software changes.
Do you know the average hold time for, before somebody first gets to speak to a live body? Not if they've spoken to someone and then they're on hold waiting for more information, but say they're just now calling and not gotten through, how long is that?
I didn't get that to you, it is on the spreadsheet, so I did not include that in course. I can get you what the average hold time is.
As a consumer, it seemed like in recent history, several months ago, it seemed like that time was fairly excessive. And then it improved significantly. And then recently, I'm hearing more from community about frustrations of, I don't know, very excessive hold times again.
We can set that and I believe our goal would be to change it to what we would like to use, change it to eight minutes. And then eight minutes, it automatically sends to your voicemail. I think right now it is significantly longer than that.
I would give an option to continue holding.
Yeah, it's very frustrating to wait on hold that long and then be dismissed in voicemail.
As a consumer, I mean, I wouldn't dream of managing that as a board member, but as a consumer, if I called and held for eight minutes and then, and then was kicked over to voicemail, I maybe just write one down or talk to somebody.
You can envision the scene in a movie when somebody, that happened, how they destroy their handset.
I know we have complaints that some people try on hold for up to 30 minutes. And that's why we're trying to work with the vendor on trying to figure out, once you're in that hold queue, how does it wrap that and how does it keep hold your place apply?
Is it? That's a long time time to resolve of late. And as I was on hold, I tried to imagine what was happening on the other end. And I know the world is short-staffed right now. So I can see that that might be it. But I'm trying to think of the length of the average phone call, a couple minutes. Is that maybe 10 or 15 calls that were waiting as long as me for the couple minute phone call?
Yes.
And is there any sort of way to have some, some live bodies, say, we know you're waiting, thank you, we're, you know, we're looking as fast as we can to get to you. Thank you for continuing the hold, if you want to leave a message, I'm happy to direct you to voicemail.
That's what some of the process improvement work will help us get to is how do we, do we have a live person who puts you on hold? Do we have a live person who periodically goes through that list? We've even talked about, do we get rid of the queue? FME is the only, only clinic that uses a calling queue because they have such a high volume of phone calls. Instead of going directly to voicemail if the phone is busy, they go and do a queue. And they'll sit in the queue for 21 seconds and then it'll ring all my phone lines again at FME. And if someone's available, it'll get picked up. If not, it goes back into the queue for another 21 seconds.
Music and then sometimes it'll ring a couple times, I'm like, oh, no, no, back to music. Does that reset my place in the queue?
That's what we ask. We're hoping it does, but the vendor said, I can't tell you that right.
Would I want it to reset my place in the queue because I was a certain number? I don't want to be a worse number.
We think, we think what's happening is because people are being on hold for 30 minutes, there is a potential that it loses its place in the queue.
So.
So. The vendor can't give me a good answer on that question. Our concern is you go in a queue. So if you sit in there for 21 seconds and let's say at 15 seconds, somebody calls in and there's available phone, we think what's happening is the person calling in gets a priority because they're calling and you can't ring again until you're at 21 seconds.
So I have to get the timing right?
Right.
And hope that happens?
So we asked the vendor, we feel, how can people constantly do that hold that long? How can they never get to the point where there's an available phone? And they couldn't answer that question for us.
Do we have a timeline of, we hope to have this resolved, like this seems like. I love friction point, that's a great term. It just seems like this is inviting people to not use us.
I'm hoping we can move, I would like to say by the end of the year, which is only eight weeks away. And if not resolved, manage our system better and look at, does that mean we look at other systems?
Is it conceivable then for the rest of the year, people are going to have half our hold times? I just, I don't think that's fair.
No, the goal from the process improvement is that we wanted to move that time. Recommendation from the vendor was, let's not change anything, let's move again in another two weeks and we can get you your answer and you can make a better decision on what needs to be changed.
So where are we at in that process?
We're trying to set something up for next week.
Next week, so conceivably sometime next week, we might have better.
Hold less. Hold less than thirty minutes hold times.
Does this happen when other clinics are trying to call you or is this just patient lines?
These are, this, this one is the main line into FME. So right now, what we've done for outside clinics, for our own clinics, we do have a backline that providers can use and that other clinics can use to get a hold of us to bypass that entire system because we realized that was a problem. And that was just put in place probably just a few months ago. Otherwise, our clinics were having to go through the exact same process.
C H C W used to be impossible to reach.
It still is. It's still.
So can I just say, I had to get a hold of Southern Health when I was in California. And I was politely told that I was the fifty-seventh person in line and that the average wait time was three hours and twenty-seven.
But they set your expectations.
At least they did.
And, you know, and I have to say to my shame, I went, yes. Those people's phones, they're terrible. So.
And that is, we would like to be able to try to set expectations, give you an average hold time, tell you where you are in the place of line or even be able to say, leave your number and it'll hold your place and we will call you back.
I love that Alaska earlier says.
One of the things I think is really important, we 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 need to serve the patient once they get through. So these are not, you know, call forwarding, we're scheduling patients. These are about pharmacy referrals, they want to talk to the nurse and things like that. So these are not for phone calls once they do get through. So when we talk a call a minute, those calls, each of them in minutes and once they get through to someone.
Is there an ability for the system to, first thing I hear maybe is that we're experiencing.
You can't say we're experiencing usually high volume calls. I hear that from every business.
We're just experiencing high call volume.
Everybody kind of.
I do want to say that. We do have the voice message that does come in, we can control that. So Angela, the clinic manager, has it. And some of the tweaks we have made to that system is, one, we say, did you know you can access your patient portal to manage your schedule? So if you're calling for appointments, you don't have to sit on hold, you can do cancellations, you can do all that online. So we do say that. We also make it very clear that at any time in the hold process, you can press zero and you will be directed to voicemail. And you can leave an urgent, non-urgent voicemail at this time. And our goal is to return that phone call by the end of the business day. Though we do give a couple options, we can do some control on that, but we don't have a lot. And then we also have, and here's our fax number, press four if you want the fax number and hours of clinic hours.
And I will say, from our perspective in quality, we experienced the same thing that you did where it was really bad. And then it got better and now it's gotten bad again. That's what we've seen from patients communicating with us about complaints. And it's really frustrating because it's like, what happened?
What, yeah, what changed?
What happened?
What did we do?
And and I think some of it is with the system that they haven't even yet figured out what's, like what it's doing that's causing that difference.
We did fix, one problem we did discover is that we had, you could only put like eleven people in a queue. So you would call like for me sometimes and get a busy signal and it would just come up on you. Yes. And that was the problem is we had a limit in the queue. Well, we opened that up to, I think we opened it up to, it was a really large number. Well, once we opened it up, now you sit in that queue longer because it's not just eleven people in that queue. It could be thirty people in that queue. So I think that it has impacted some of our wait time. But at least you're not getting a busy signal and disconnected.
I'm thinking that communication is, even if it's not the answer people want to hear, they appreciate it. And if I know going into a phone call that, well, I might hold for twenty or thirty minutes, that is going to inform my choice of whether I want to leave a voicemail. But if I think, oh, no, I'm gonna, I'll just hold, well, by the time I've invested ten minutes, what's another?
Right.
What's another time? Oh, it's a lot, really. But I'm like, oh, gosh, you know, I've spent this long. Do I really hang up now? I could get a next person and kind of a gambler's fallacy, but it's just.
You have to give it five phones.
Few minutes from here. It's like we used to call the radio station.
That will, that will confuse issues at all with what's going on with the.
It comes back to being transparent and we'd like to be able to tell people.
It seems like most companies these days immediately say, give us your number, we will call you back in the order you called. So you can hang up and get all of your life for ten minutes, thirty minutes, three hours and twenty-three minutes.
Right.
But you know your place is reserved. And to me, if you don't have enough people, that is the cleanest way. It's it's just, yeah, I don't have to stand there and just think like, you're like, I can't type, I need both hands to type.
No, I completely understand. And that is a goal we would like to get to.
Why is that hard? I don't understand why that's hard.
Because the company were with, so they didn't know if that's.
Why would any company to do this, just one hearing call, say, give me your number, I'm putting you in line. Give me your number, I'm going to put you in line. Give me your number, you can answer that every thirty seconds, you could be putting a number in line.
When they say it takes two weeks to get back to you, I think they're just stalling.
I was like, they're trying to hire employees.
Should we be with a better company perhaps? Is that something that we consider?
No, it's something that we are looking at is, it's call center software. But the question becomes is how compatible is it with the system we have? So the ask was to work with the vendor we currently have, see what they have available for us. And then if they can't give us what we need, then we have to start with another one.
I just want to give people every reason to be their home for help here and getting through.
I feel like Matt Bob would never get on hold because they seem very quiet out there.
No, I've been on hold a lot if I, if I'm on hold. I mean, it takes me five minutes to drive there. I just drive there and put my body in front of somebody in the office. Takes no time.
Patients do that.
Yes. I mean, it's a shame that you have to do that. It's easier and quicker to show up in person.
Okay, well, I look forward to hearing updates on this. And if you have updates even before next meeting, I would love to. This is just such an important issue. I'm glad that it's getting attention now, so.
Well, please have one. It's a, it's a, it's a sensitive topic. I mean, we, we got an email fifteen minutes for this meeting on this very topic.
I will say, this week on our press standing, we have one positive comment about the phones. And they thought that it was answered right away and got, the message was returned and they were absolutely thrilled.
That was the number one queue position, those lucky ducks. Oh, that's good news. Good news. Okay. And then, oh, I have one other question. Do we have travelers in clinics right now?
This year is the first year we have ever, what, with travelers. I have twenty-three MA positions open. And at one point I had nine RN positions open. So I'm down to, I think, four or six RNs and I still have twenty-three MAs and that number continues to grow as we bring out providers.
Open, like needing a fill?
So we.
Do all clinics have travelers right now?
Workplace health does not. ENT does not. Ortho does. General surgery does. Eads does. Women's health does. FME was probably my biggest holdout and we finally had to look at, we're trying to build, we're down to two RNs. So we're trying to find an RN up there and we're also trying to do some MAs up there. Weellum has a couple travelers.
Okay.
The goal really there was to try to give our staff an upgrade anymore because you have to have the MAs with the providers. And we have to be able to provide that service.
On page thirty-five, there's a graph. Can you tell me what information I'm getting from this graph?
So what you're getting is, so if you look at the first date, like September sixth, I'm sorry, it's so small, it really didn't translate well. So what it'll tell you is for that day, you had almost over six hundred calls for that entire day. And that first group, that blue group is from eight in the morning till nine in the morning. And then it's from nine, that orange is from nine to ten, that gray is then from ten to eleven.
So the height of the color block indicates the number of calls during that hour?
Yes. And then your top of your line is your total number of calls for that day. So you can see Mondays are always our higher volume calls. A little surprising that Fridays are coming up low. Sometimes the clinic feels Fridays seem really busy, but according to this, it's really Monday, Tuesdays that we're seeing the most volume in for phone calls.
My kids will never get sick after hours on a Friday, so maybe that's part of it.
Thank you.
For you, I would just like to commend Stacy. She's been in this role for about six months. And has really rolled her sleeve up and and dismantled things like the telephone issue, training of MA issues and things like that. And and taken the issues apart, taken the problems apart and is looking at real solutions for these things. But again, welcome to your first six months.
And Stacy is a whore. I'm here to support you. If you need something from us, tell us, because then we have to solve this.
Oh, I, I know. This is, it's like the golden ticket. If we can solve this, we can also apply it to the phone centers for the hospital, for imaging, for lab, for all the other areas. So.
This is our answer to the damn phone.
Yes, it absolutely is.
I have one last question for you and I don't know if I can give that to other people. But have we looked at what other organizations are doing and how they are successful organizations, still ones and the ones that aren't successful unless we want to find out what?
We are. Tricia and I were going to go to Virginia Mason because they need to implement a call center before their clinic. So that was on our list. I was out sick for about two weeks, so we need to get that back on track and get moving that back.
And they obviously are much larger and have a broader set of resources available to them. So curious to know, maybe their organizations our size that have figured out that golden.
Their whole system was attacked for a few weeks in October. They were all shut down for communication. It was a disaster for a couple of weeks with their slowly ramping back up. When you say call center, like somewhere outside the organization of?
Can I weigh in here? Because there are pluses and minuses to call center and that is a major, we're, we're not leaping to that solution. So healthcare systems have gone to call centers and gone back to that personal touch where each clinic has their own. And it's a contraction and expansion process that's gone on.
For my call center experience, it's nothing.
For me, though, it's the software because the challenge with this data is I don't get it until the next day. What I want to be able to do is look at who's taking phone calls now, how long are my average calls? How many people do I have in a queue right now? Do I have to figure out, is there a way to say, oh, gosh, FME is really incredibly busy? Is there a way to route some of those phone calls somewhere else? That maybe the PSR is in, P is in, R is busy, can you help with that? We currently don't have that ability until tomorrow, I can look at what happened.
You can see what would have been nice to do if you had known about it other side.
Right. And even then, they can't tell me exactly how many people were in the queue at one time.
And they being the phone.
The phone company. So going voice, yes, we've gotten access to more data and we can tell things, but I really would like something more real time. And the PSR said they would love to know how many people were.
Really have no clue how many people are just lurking. I mean, I would be scared to look at the phone knowing it might be kind of people waiting in line.
Right.
Feel very sad to the inside.
So it's, it's, so when I see call center, I see more, it's software and ability to get that real time data. I could tell Karen, average calls are ten minutes, but Sally's are five. Okay, so what's going on there? Are they just different type of calls? Is it the random draw? Is it Sally's transferring everything as fast as possible because she doesn't want to deal with it? So right now, I can't get to that level.
No, that's.
And it's really challenging.
Like that would be very frustrating in your position to not have access to that information.
And then also Jeff is the one who's doing this data. And I'm like, well, Jeff, it's not like you want to manipulate this data every day for the rest of your life.
Okay, well, yeah, updates will be rolled in.
Okay, thank you.
Very much. All right. Any other questions for Stacy or Michelle? Thank you very much, Stacy.
You're welcome.
Right. Court Services, Michelle World, Chief Public Relations.
Hey, guys. I don't really have anything to add, but I would be happy to take any questions. I think that you guys have just gone quiet.
But it's, I, I appreciate the fact that we're still on track for the December third event. I think that'll be well received by everybody at all. So I'm glad that that's still on track.
Absolutely. It's going to be a fun event. It's fun working with the students and the recognition committee.
I mean, as the program with the Central students, is that blooms and such, will there be reports on what they're up to, that sort of thing?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? It was coming in and out.
Sure. The, with the Central students, does that program kind of blooms? I'm just curious, just more for personal curiosity, just kind of how that goes for you and what that collaboration is like.
Yeah, we're brand new into it. I've been really appreciative of the director and his involvement in it. And the kids have been really receptive. It seems to be, it seems to be very helpful at this point. You know, sometimes bringing in different computers could be sometimes a little bit harder on their department. But they're doing tasks that are helping us out and I'm hopeful that it's something that we can continue onto future quarters.
I like seeing these connections. That's great. Any other questions, comments for Michelle? All right, thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Jeff, he's my chief information officer.
Is in Orlando.
Are you Jeff?
It's Grant. So I will also make up answers for Jeff.
Does anybody have questions for Julie, Jeff? I love that.
Can I ask him about some of this last sentence, but it won't be as fun as Julie's.
All right. Well, thank you for the report, Jeff, and I hope you enjoyed your time.
Yeah.
And you. All right. Ron Rocker, Chief of Facilities here.
Okay, my report starts on page forty-five. And I just have a couple small updates to the project. So for the energy project, the hot water heaters are done and the pipe insulation is now done. That's changed since I wrote this. And also we've got off a top dead center with DOH. So they are now reviewing the plans so that we can continue on with that. So I had noted that the fan walls would probably be moved to spring and that may still happen. But it's also possible that if we get approval from DOH in a hurry, that's, and it's weather dependent, but we may be able to do it in November. But that's really our last shot. Otherwise, that gets pushed to spring. Front campus planning, so the, the parking lot, the north parking lot is, that'll be paved on the seventh. And landscaping is starting now. They're starting to get the irrigation and soil in for that. The cameras will be going up, but the IT infrastructure in internal medicine is taxed out. And so they don't have the ports to support the cameras at this moment, so they'll be working on that end. The flooring and ED, it's still on hold, but ED has kind of signaled to me that we might be able to do that here in this fall. So we're kind of working together on, on that. So we have the materials ready to go. And the family birthing place, and those three birthing rooms where we were redoing the casework and then we're bringing some mid gases into that. But we're also considering updating the finishes in the bathroom because the project, we're having to replace the flooring in the main room because for one, it's VCT and it's not really appropriate from an infection control standpoint. So now we're thinking we should just go ahead and do the bathroom. And so we'll, we'll get that, see what that scope looks like. But that would get us in and out and not have to go back into those rooms. And then the mobile MRI pad, that asphalt's scheduled now, so that'll be done on the seventh. And so we'll be on schedule on that. And the water damage over at Twinkle's in the Mountain View, we weren't able to find the Wayne's coat material for that. We've now found a source for that, so that's where, so that'll move ahead. And the medical arts expansion, we've now got a ROM number for what it would take to move the utilities to, to be able to build over that alleyway. And so that's looking like a million one hundred fifty-five thousand. However, going through their estimate, it didn't look like they factored in moving fiber. And I know there's fiber in that alleyway too. So anyhow, that's that's the ROM number, so that will now kind of help us decide going forward what we want to do. So as you mentioned, that wall is complete now. That kind of shocked me. They got all that brick wall done in a week's time, but looks nice. That's changed since then. That's really all the changes I wanted to note to the project. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Just a few things going on.
Just a few.
Ron, can I ask, we met with the city to talk about vacating the alley between medical arts annex and medical arts. Are they, were they part of this process of looking at moving the utilities? Or is that consultant work we engaged that we now need to pivot back to the cities?
Well, let's see, so we engaged engineers to, you know, take a look at what that would be. And I I think they worked with the city a little bit, but this is all really high level at this point. We really.
Essentially, the city said, yeah, if we could, you know, do the right things, get the right partners to sign up, we can vacate that alley, expand the rural health clinic across the alleyway over to the medical arts annex. This is the first step figuring out just how expensive moving all those utilities is going to be. So a lot of work to still do.
Yeah, so conceptually, that that was possible. I think one of it was it was somewhat contingent on working with the owner of the pharmacy there and getting their approval. But yeah.
Right.
So we're on the bottom of page forty seven, the Medical Specialties Clinic. I just went seven sixteen Manitoba. Which building is that? Is that the COVID clinic or?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You have a question, Bob?
No, it's just a lot of stuff going on, a lot of work.
Agreed. So I'm with that. That's why we keep the door to Ron's office locked from the outside.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Ron.
You're welcome.
Medical staff, let's start with Dr. Timmy O'Brady, Chief of Staff.
Thank you. You have a question. You have the same question. Oh, have you viewed the applications? First time they all reap. By a set of doctors and five. And you see is all reviewed and then for approve these applications.
I move to approve this list of items for report. Can I second?
Been moved by Matt and seconded by Terry to approve the list. All of them, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please say nay.
Still a very smooth process in place. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes. Anything else for us? That's it? All right.
I wanted to inform you, you probably already know there's an election for you, Chief of Staff, come up in November. Retiring from Chief of Staff at the end of this year.
I told everyone.
Oh, yeah.
All those young folks, leave it.
I'm not leaving.
Leave it, leave it in position.
It's changing.
All right. Dr. Kevin Martin, Chief Medical Officer.
My report starts on page fifty six. The thing that I, two things I'd like to call out first is that we now have a physician leadership team. It includes Dr. Miller, Dr. Watson, Dr. Davis, and Dr. Lindsay. The other thing I want to call out is on a more personal note, my gratitude to Dr. Altman for serving on the Royal Collaborative Ethics Committee.
Yeah, he's co-chairing that committee. It's a new committee with the Royal Collaborative that. I mean, it grew out of the triage team to provide ethics consultation with for smaller hospitals that maybe can't support their ethics meeting, that Dr. Watson.
Initially, it'll be more of an education function. That's largely because counsel for the collaborative is concerned about liability if we're actually doing consultations.
Yeah.
That should be fairly minimal, and we expect to clear back a little, but in the meantime, it'll be an exercise in the group coming to a shared understanding and vocabulary around medical ethics in general and rural medical ethics in particular. There's one of the things that frustrations that Matt and I shared in the triage teamwork was the lack of understanding of the challenges in rural settings. So the example from the triage work was we were expected to make decisions based on de-identified data in just a case presentation, but in a small community, the case presentation data is enough to identify the individual because it's your name. So there was a sense amongst those of us doing triage work that consulting the University of Washington for solutions around actual concerns in rural America might not be fruitful. A physician in Newport shared that she had called U D O because they had an issue with the mom in the third trimester and potentially some issues with the unborn child. And the recommendation they got from U D O was to send the mom for a high level maternal fetal medicine consult, to which the doctor responded, I got one of those in my hip pocket. So it's interesting work. It's exciting work, and I feel good having that on me.
I I likewise, I think it'll be great to have you co-chairing that committee. And and this probably goes without saying that this is part of my day job sort of thing. Not it's not related to my work on the board. It's related to what I do in my work in medical ethics. But it's it's really exciting to be doing this kind of this kind of work. So I'm really glad to be on this committee and be serving with Dr. Martin.
Stroke alert, E R room two, stroke alert, E R room two.
I'm grateful to you both for serving on that field, field represented.
So I I should now just add, Martin, that some of the dysfunction to the south we're beginning to hear is going to be disruptive to our O B program.
Yes.
Can you, I know Dr. Dawson is very concerned about programs that are going away down there. Can you speak to that?
As of February, Memorial will no longer have any form of maternal fetal medicine. That's been our number one referral direction for monthly challenging pregnancies. U D O is offering some form of virtual service that we have to explore. A lot of that work can be done if you have a skilled ultrasound tech. And not much of it really has to be hands on, so I'm looking into that for our resource. But absent that, it means that our highest pregnancies are going to be looking at a church as the other.
All right.
Yeah.
How often I have those sort of cases arise in this community?
Probably on the order of six to twelve times a year. It's kind of a delivery volume of about three hundred, three hundred fifty.
Really, right? Gosh, would that cost in between?
Yeah, it's. It's. The word unfortunate is a tragic understatement.
It's definitely on Dr. Dawson's radar. Part of safety that I think is going away, they gave him confidence that all of these patients.
And and yeah, just to review some of the changes at Memorial, they've stopped doing screening colonoscopies. That's one of the reasons that we're seeing a large line going. They've stopped doing any kind of vascular surgery. Straightforward stuff, they're referring to Dr. Zaman. They have stopped admitting patients to hospice, so if you want to live forever, move to Yakima. They've contracted their inpatient volume by forty percent. And I do think that a lot of the increase we're seeing in E D volumes, Julie said, is because people have figured out that it is quicker to drive to home for than just waiting at home.
And Jason is striking.
And as the work gets out, if that's the case, I expect that only to change. It will be interesting to see how quickly Multi Care, Multi Care's acquisition of Memorial will impact it. At our physician leadership breakfast yesterday, I shared that I've had good experiences with Multi Care bringing facilities back from the brain. And Dr. Petty and I both have history with the organization, and Dr. Petty shared their more recent histories than less so.
What is the timeline like for that too, the Multi Cares?
I don't know the particulars of their deal. When they took over to Samaritan Piala, operationally, there were changes that took place within the year. But it was probably seven, ten years before they finished building with a flagship hospital. But again, that was two thousand and ten. Well, they did the acquisitions around two thousand, and they opened the new town in two thousand and ten.
Actual acquisition by Multi Care's schedule happened early sometime this year. Yakima's board was voted to sell to Multi Care, Multi Care's board, I believe, meets in December, so.
Six days ago, they were publishing the pictures of everybody smiling and signing.
Yeah, on the Yakima.
Well, Multi Care was there too.
Multi Care's board is not.
So Dr. Martin, you mentioned that we're tracking by zip code how many patients that are coming up here from Yakima?
Yes.
Do we have rough numbers?
I don't.
Jason sent some early reports out when we started seeing the uptick end of the sixties. So we start, just started to track that. So that's been a rapidly developing phenomenon last eight weeks, nine weeks. Do you have any sense on that, Dee? No. So we are looking at it, have some baseline information that Jason created early on.
Universities charge out of state tuition. Are we allowed to go out of county?
Well, I mean, something to be said because they they charge a facility fee versus we don't. I mean, yeah.
Somebody, I don't look at an orange, and somebody's got an orange to say if we're going to go that way.
And it depends from governance.
I was just educating myself.
I had a question for Dr. Martin. Under program development, you use the term, we continue to look for partners in psychiatry and nephrology. What does it mean when you say we're looking for partners? What would that look like?
So we have been reaching out to dialysis services to, it's going to be easier for us to partner with people who are already staff and who are creased out. And similarly, in psychiatry, rural psychiatry is a tiny unicorn being threatened by a leopard hunt. I'll hire one when I see one, but I'm not holding my breath. Additionally, we're talking with potential partners around medical oncology. As we expand surgical services, we have a access to an infusion facility. What I heard from you guys at the last year, which is oncology is a service that is on your priority list. So Tricia and I are working to try to find ways to bring those services here. But again, the potential partners are struggling with staffing.
Oh, and thinking of that, we've been able to offer some specialties, but like you said, it's it's kind of a pinch point because often we only have one specialist to do it. And so one thing I'm curious about, when when we do stuff at that level without extended staff and additional thing, are we seeing any complications from the procedures that we're having trouble, you know, backstopping, if you will, when we have such limited resources? Or how how is that turning? Look back last year or two and different type of procedures than some.
Some and by some, less than half a dozen that we've had to set west. But for the most part, we've managed things here well. Part of that is trying to do, we have a provider who's here for a chunk of time who faces towards the beginning of that time so that there's more time for for complications to declare themselves. In fact, two of the complications that I'm thinking about we shared were while the provider was here. So in that sense, we've been able to take advantage of relationships. But we should have something more formal.
Thank you.
Great. You don't mind? Not going or chief clinical officer?
Well, we have, as you've heard in the clinical quotes, we have been busy. And it is reflected in the financial packet that was sent to you all. If we'll start on page sixty one, which is the stats. And we were right at basically budget for admissions and patient days, one and two, items one and two. Deliveries, almost right on budget. Dropping down to line fourteen, E R, you see how busy Dee and Dr. Lindsay and the E R team were. I think this is one of the busiest months that we've had.
And Scott, yes, it's not just the business, but the acuity is.
I can't I can't answer acuity. I can I can answer busyness.
I I've been here for seven years, and this this is probably one of the highest acuity, you know, per volume.
So more numbers and each each case is.
But it has definitely gone up recently.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, it's we've been we've been missing, you see, just where we were versus budget, where we were versus prior year, and there's there's a lot of growth. And as I mentioned, when we were talking about budgeting for two thousand and twenty three, we are we are budgeting additional staff and assuming that we're going to even grow at the, you know, I think we had a thousand visits or something like that next year. So we're we're planning for growth. Urgent care again is busy. Radiology, some of the discussions about the high end imaging, but also E R drives a lot of season, mostly in imaging volume. Down with lines twenty five through twenty eight, you see the clinic visits. It was a, it's it's been busy at the clinics, as Stacy has mentioned. So just these, these statistical numbers that you see are talking about a very busy organization, and it was driving a lot of revenue. So if you move over to page sixty four, you see the impact of that of that revenue. We were a million, one point six million dollars ahead of budgets for the month. Nineteen million dollars, we have almost caught up for the year to date revenue shortfall. But we have about eight hundred six thousand dollars for the budget. It's appearing that October, we will probably catch up for that revenue shortfall. October's trending very much similar to what September was.
Nineteen million is not the biggest number ever. You know, I don't.
I don't track anymore. Don't track anymore.
I believe that. She asked that. I believe it, I see it.
With, again, we were contractuals or partially below budget. We have, and so we were able with the additional revenue we had and more contractuals that we have. Inpatient service revenue was over budget by six hundred fifty-three thousand. Other operating revenue is a shortfall there primarily due to three forty B and the pharmaceutical companies. Overall expenses, we're below budget. The one outlier is, is the big outlier is temporary labor, and we're using it throughout the organization. Vicky is, was able to hire some people, so we're actually budgeting for less temporary labor in some of the areas that we are budgeting for, and others, we are assuming, and it's definitely critical and necessary for us to be able to provide care. So, we were able to post an operating income of one point three million dollars for the month. Had unrealized losses on investments of three hundred twenty-three thousand. And so, a debt for the month of one million, one million seventeen thousand dollars.
So, we're kind of stuck, we can't find people to hire permanently, and so we have this temporary labor cost every month. It actually is quite a big chunk of money every month.
Well, we're, we're feeling pretty lucky when we can hire those free labor folks, because that's a tight market as well, so. Vicky, or Ollie, I mean, do you still have requests after ten labor, or are they pretty-
Yeah, particularly in surgery, that's a difficult one to find, even if you're rolling the pay, but raise your strength. Can't necessarily find them.
Is RNs for surgery, are there roles in the surgery?
RNs.
We currently have three travelers back there and one surgery tech traveler, so there's four. That's, that and ER are our big utilizers.
Our plan to bring that down is basically to just keep trying to hire people.
And train, Amy, you're about to say soon.
Well, and Scott, we'll just re-envisioning how ER is a nonprofit, allow us to go through international type people, or is that for physicians only, or?
Yeah, it's not just physicians. That, it will help with foreign-trained physicians, but it, we already have the ability, Mandat has signed a contract with a group to be able to bring over nurses, and there's no, there's no restrictions for us from who we have, so that-
Yes, we actually just got our first candidate, so that process is rolling.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
So, very, very nice, a good financial statement for the month, a strong balance sheet. Not all the organizations in the state are able to report these kinds of very, very good numbers. Page sixty-three is the digital financial debt report. Days in the council seat, although I think the overall, days in the air grew by about a million eight. It only tipped up by point five just because of the revenue growth. So, we're right about sixty-two days. Our days cash, or our cash investments on hand dipped a little bit, about three and a half days because we had an interim two thousand twenty-two cost for payment of nine hundred seventy-six thousand dollars. Were not for that payment, we would have had been right at some level.
The series, the labels have, you know, dropped off. Can you believe that the, the line, there's the cash on hand, but the, the blue, red, and green, can you remind me of those ones?
I think it was where, the blue, I think it's where some of the money is, it is.
So, like the blue stands for, rather than saying cash, investments is a series one?
I know, I don't, yes, it may not be just-
Something we called from past month.
Jason's calling.
I'm, he's, he's not on right now, I'm, I'm not sure what this series is.
Particularly the greens, I'm so curious now that there's not like all of the green ones, it's so steady. Is that, would that be our outright or necessarily the school? I was gonna say super steady, maybe that was.
Well, I'm not.
I can compare with one of, from last year.
Well, I was for last month. Thanks.
I thought it was a label before.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think it did either, but I-
Okay, well, then I was not serving last month.
No, I, I wasn't either. I watch the tip and sometimes-
Thank you.
So, anyway, a, a very good financial for the ABH, yeah, within mine. And questions related to it here? A lot of other things in addition to the financial report, we have the state auditor that is in auditing two years of District One and Two, two thousand twenty, twenty-one. They're also auditing three years of District Two. So, the finance and accounting staff are working closely with that. We will, next month, as you look at our year-to-date expenses, our year-to-date expenses are over our budget for September by three hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. Our overall expenses are probably going to exceed that by even greater amounts, so we will be bringing a revised two thousand twenty-two budget to make sure that we can spend the, we're authorized to spend the next three dollars, and we'll bring that next month, and it'll be a fairly large number variance over that, just make sure we don't exceed that expense. Our, they're authorized. And then lastly, we are, we will be, we have RFP out with hyper-sandlers for fifteen million dollars of debt to finance the surgery and DI and expansion. The, the proposal back from, they sent it out to six different banks. The, the proposals are due tomorrow. They will be evaluating those financing proposals over the weekend, and we will probably see some, some numbers about what we can finance this expansion project, the interest rate, what kind of terms next week and next little while. So, we'll have a decision to make regarding whether or not we'll want to accept one of those proposals. And then you have Mitchell's report about the work that he's doing with grant volume. And then we have two capital items that we're seeking board approval for. One is the MRI and CT pad that will allow us to keep having MRI services when we do the expansion project. The pad is being put over on Spokane Street, over on the other side of the med surgery unit. And so, that would, that would be where the MRI would, patients would go. Or CTE, we brought in mobile CT. And the, the cost of doing this is three hundred seventy-three thousand dollars.
And this is a permanent pad, and while we're doing construction, we use a mobile CP. If we weren't doing construction, we still could use it for a secondary unit, I mean, so it's, it has a lot of usefulness besides just the construction project.
It, it has long-term uses through either a mobile MRI or mobile CT.
How soon would this get underway, the door about the weather that's-
Full, full disclosure, Bob and I already gave them temporary permission because of weather, they had to start immediately to pull this off, so.
Doc has figured all out.
So, we're hoping at least one of you agree with us. We're under a lot of pressure.
I, I think it's important to do it because today, they got a foot of snow in Chinook Pass, and they closed the pass. So, winter is happening now for us.
We need to get on this and-
When are they putting the asphalt in for the pad? Do you know that they're, they're gonna do that asphalt on the path?
For the, the north parking lot, is that what you're talking about?
For, for the MRI and the CT pad.
Yeah, well, the MRI, MRI pad is on the seventh, and the north parking lot is on the ninth of November.
December.
With that in mind, I would move to approve the capital expenditure request for the mobile pad.
I second.
Thank you. Wait for one more.
This is by John, and seconded by Matt, to approve the MRI and CT pad, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All opposed, please say nay. All right, we can all breathe easier now. And then you've got one more for us?
One more is the, as you talked about, this is the CR that is used by vascular and orthopedic providers.